Okay.
Okay, I have just started the recorder, Paul. If you want to call the meeting to order and I will try and...
All right. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting. The OLI is only a special meeting. It's Monday, November 17th. We are at the OLI town hall visiting conference room. Eric, if you could help me in identifying who was present?
Okay. We have two by left going around the table here. Jay Marsh, Michael Barnes, Amy Hewitt, Michael Foliano, Denise Savage-Joe, and Mary Jo Nozol. There we go. I knew I could get it all straight. We are missing Mary Gardner-Capola. And obviously, we are missing Michael Barnes, whose term expires at midnight. Next up...
No, Michael Miller.
Michael Miller, rather. Michael Miller, I'm sorry. Next up on the rotation, and here's Mary Gardner-Capola coming in right now. That's okay. We're just getting started. Next up on the rotation to be seated would be Michael Foliano. And because his term starts at midnight, it just sort of makes logical sense to seat him anyway.
Yes.
So, Michael Foliano will be seated for Michael Miller.
Mr. Foliano's term begins tomorrow.
Well, yes. 12:01.
That's 12:01. I won't be here, but they need somebody else who will.
Okay, well...
I apologize that I cannot be there today. I can't want to share what I have with the rest of you. But I'm... Got some medicine and we'll take care of it. So, our agenda item, and only agenda item this evening, is the zoning regulations rewrite workshop. And the focus this evening is going to be on the parking lot items, tabled items, whatever you want to call them, that we went through reviewing the regulations. And Eric, I'll let you talk a little bit about where we should be at this point.
Okay. I have, if anybody needs copies, the table document we put together here that has what we are theoretically still working on. If anybody needs a copy. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. There you go. Let's... Okay.
So, the meeting is on the 20/21/23. I sent out an email on 10/23 with a link to the document center that points to the document that has the 10/23 watermark.
Okay.
And it had a following discussion. Page 183 has been revised.
Okay. Well, there you go. Anyway, my goal for the evening here is to try and get through everything so that we can have this as a submitted application for your December 8th meeting so that we would then be able to schedule this for public hearing in January. For the tabled items, it is my strong suggestion that you do one of three things. That you either A, essentially pass it on in the form that it was presented to you by Francisco Gomes; B, that you table it until Phase 2; or C, that you revise the language. We give Mr. Gomes revised language to include so that we can come back with a final version of the document. And again, my hope is that we make fairly steady progress on this so that we're not here until 10 o'clock tonight. The whole year is, what, 9 o'clock? Paul, is that your deadline for tonight?
Deadline. You need to schedule until 9:00 PM.
Yes, 8:30.
If we can get out of here by 8:30, Michael, I'm delighted.
I mean, the reason you wouldn't, so we'll find out.
Okay. And again, my firm suggestion, though it is again your guys' meeting, is that we sort of, if there are issues, we figure out... Do more than... Basically, is this something that we think we really need to table for the next time? Or is this something that we, as a consensus, think is going forward? Or is there a way to make it go forward by changing some language? So, with that, again, I have, starting at Section 5 Use Tables with the boat livery. Is there anything else that someone wants to talk about before we get to that?
I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to get bogged down here on any particular item. We're going to go through that. And I would like for us to say, as you said, Eric, I can live with it or I can't live with it. If we can identify quickly, very quickly, what the item is in there, that's the most troubling item, we should then mark it down. If we can't, if it's going to require discussion, if it might require some input from Francisco, let's just move on. Because we could end up bogged down at 9 o'clock on number 2. So, I'd like to keep it moving. If it's not that bad, let's keep it moving.
Okay. So, I see from Jane's notes that we already sort of started talking about boat livery. I don't know if any...
He did.
Yeah. I thought we went through some of these. I can't remember how far we...
Well, let's...
We got... This is what got us into the discussion as to whether these were really clean-up items or whether they should be deferred to actual regulation rewrite.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, I think that's what we really just need to figure out.
So, that's how far we got.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, okay. With boat livery then, what was the consensus from last time on boat livery? Are we going to kick that to the next one or...
I think it was we were going to kick it to the next one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Phase 2. Fair enough. Commercial services.
I think anything that's a new definition to sum this up in time should be kicked out.
Okay. My only problem is the next one is going to be a huge thing to lift.
I understand.
So, if there is anything we can get that is not being kicked, I would like to try and do that. Simply because I understand there's new definitions. But the whole idea here is, right now, it's totally undefined. So, if we move forward and it remains totally undefined, I'm not sure that's better. I mean, is the new definition costing someone something? Or is it just a clear understanding of what we all think the definition should or could be? Or is there some change to the definition that would make it more palatable?
And Eric, let me ask you this just procedurally. If, to make it clear to what you're talking about, Michael. So, if we accept a definition, and it's a new def... They're all undefined, so it's a new definition. We're still putting it forward for approval. I mean, this is still the commission putting it forward to... There'll be time during the other commissions and other regulatory authorities reviewing it to consider them. There'll be time during a public hearing for them to consider, right?
Yeah. I mean, the public hearing is going to open in January. I'm expecting to at least continue it probably through February at this point.
Right. So, it's not the final say on any of these. Discussion will continue.
Well, Jane...
And so, the idea is to narrow that discussion to the most critical items so that we can make sure that we are able to, you know, deliver.
To Paul's point, getting times of the essence is the way he wants it accelerated these through.
It's not accelerate, it's just keep it moving.
I'm not accelerating anything.
We've been working on this since August.
Do not put words in my mouth.
Yeah.
I'm not accelerating anything.
So, what did you say then?
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is that if you can identify what's wrong with this or why the language doesn't work, let's identify it. If you can't, just because for some reason you don't like it, that's where it has to be tabled and it's got to move forward. But if there's a specific instance in this that is the birth point, then what's the birth point? Can we solve it now or do we need more time? But I'm not saying rush through these. Make that clear.
Paul, the commercial services is an undefined term.
Okay.
And that's why I think we are wanting to eliminate it because we wouldn't just throw in a word and say it's in the LI zone without knowing what it is.
Correct.
So, personally, if you want to ask me, we cross out commercial services, period, until we find a need for it.
Yeah.
Excellent idea.
Okay.
So, I agree.
But that's just on that one specific thing. You keep going back to the broader process.
Well, no, because...
I want to be able to...
Well, for sure.
Let's go right to it.
We did not hear from Francisco on any of these undefineds. He did not come back with any suggested...
Well, no, the point of most of these is he's given you a new definition.
Yes.
And the point is, you have...
This one doesn't have a definition.
This one, this particular one...
Let's just keep going.
Yeah, let's cross it out.
Could I just have my question answered? So, he has not come back since our last meeting with any suggested language.
No.
No.
Because we didn't give him the table to...
We didn't give him anything to come out.
This is a...
I thought from our last meeting, maybe I misheard this, that you thought you were going to ask him if he had any suggestions.
Not on this. The last meeting, we were talking about a different item and we were asking for suggestions on it.
Okay.
Okay? And that was not commercial services. That was the school, for-profit schools.
Yep.
And I have not heard back from him on the for-profit schools. We did have a conference call with him. He did say he needed to work on it. He didn't have anything ready. He's going to get back to us, hopefully, in advance of the December 8th meeting so that we can decide, before we hear from the woman coming in, if we have language that's available to use for that.
So, I guess on this one, I agree with Jane. Let's eliminate unless he has a reason for us to keep it in.
Okay. I will mark it as deleted.
If he sees something that we missed...
It's something only in the LI zone. So, I think it can go until we find a need for it.
Okay. I will mark it as to be deleted.
Okay. Marine-related services, that's up to you.
Yeah. So, I just felt that, because you were talking about before Denise in prior meetings was that whether something was a substantive change or...
Yeah.
An update. And I felt that any new definition being introduced, to me, was a substantive change, even if they're defining it because these are definitions being supplied to us and not definitions that we came up with on our own.
Well, that's why we have a consultant, though.
Yeah, I understand that. But just as I agree with a consultant, for instance, we've got to make sure that just because he's hired to do his job doesn't mean he's doing everything that we need to do.
So, I guess I was looking at...
What he's providing is he's providing the best practice. And that's the best practice.
And I guess the other piece of...
Now, if we have a problem with the way it's worded as a best practice, that's a different story.
Yeah. His company is providing the definitions based on his context and his research, right? But if another company was doing it, they might provide a different type of definition.
Absolutely. But the point is, we are thinking, at least as a former lawyer, I am thinking, that a defined term is better than an undefined term. And so, if you don't like the definition, I understand that. But then, the answer is not leave it undefined. The answer is, why don't you like it and what can we do to change it? And if we can figure that out tonight, great. If we can't, we'll table it to Phase 2.
Yeah.
But I would rather not just say, any new definition is new and we don't like it. That's not, that's not where we need to be tonight, I think. I think we need to specifically say why we don't like it and whether we can change it. And if we can't agree, great, we'll table it. But I'd like to at least try to move forward on some of these.
So, we went through all of the definitions. Are you just... So, I'm looking right now at Section 5 of the Use Tables. Should I be looking at the definitions and what's the...
Well, I think it's in combination, as Jane has indicated. I mean, marine...
Because I think what I'm saying is, a lot of these got pulled up when we were talking about the definitions, not what we're going to do in the Use Tables.
Okay. Well, then, then let's, while we're working on...
I'm just trying to make it easier for us because if we just, it doesn't mean anything to me if I'm just looking at the Use Tables. So, I'm just trying to figure out the best way for us to process.
So, let's go and look at marine-related, let's see.
Sure.
Services, which is actually, let's see. I have marine-related sales, marine research facility. And let's go back. Marine-related services is not a defined term?
No. See, we're using the Use Table either. It's marine-related sales.
Okay. Well, that's it. Marine-related sales is a defined term.
So, can you remember what you had going with that?
It's in the marine-related sales.
Marine-related sales. There's no marine-related services. So, let's go change that to sales. And then, look at the definition, which is on, I have it as 197.
A retail facility specializing in sale of marine-related goods, including marine equipment, engines, bait, tackle, and other supplies essential to boating, fishing, and maritime activities.
Okay.
It's on 190.
190.
Wait, which date of the draft are you looking at?
We're at 10/21. 10/21.
10/21 or...
It says 10/23 on it, but we're not sure if it's 10/23.
I think the difference is, is a change on page 183 or 321.
Yeah.
All right. It's give or take that page. I don't know.
Because marine-related sales, we have a definition. We have what zone it's allowed, or zones it's allowed in. So, let's see if there's specific issues that we want to address with it.
So, right now, it's a new definition, a new term.
It isn't.
And they allow it in the WF20, right?
No, no. It's allowed in...
C-10 and C-30.
And it's by site plan in WF20 and special comment in C-10, C-30.
Do we want to have it in the LI too? Or is that unrealistic because it's not...
Up...
Okay. Well, that gets... Yeah.
Well, this is, that's what I'm talking about, is that... You're just about to say what I'm talking about.
Yes. Well, what we're saying is, if you want to extend the definition, then we can do that next time. Keep it on...
They're extending it right now.
No. You're talking about a Use Table issue. Are you okay with the definition?
Yeah, okay with the definition.
Okay. That's different. We have the Use Table discussion a while left. So, tonight, we're just looking at definitions.
Yeah.
Okay? So, we're good with the definition.
Okay.
Okay. Awesome.
Great. Mixed uses, just allowed in the SVVD at present.
I had an okay, like we got past that one.
Okay. Then let's go past that, then. Outdoor recreational use, just allowed in the C-10, C-30 at present.
So, we're looking at the definition to... Do you need to complete the definition or the Use Table?
Well, let's see. If we have a...
Definition of outdoor recreational facilities, outdoor facilities designed and equipped for conduct of tennis, hark, handball, paddleball, squash, swimming, skating, and similar such activities, notably not pickleball.
That was our question. That didn't exist. I mean, it's, we can add it. It says similar such activities.
Right.
Wherever we get everything. Yeah.
Except...
All being allowed to the...
In the residential zones.
Yeah. So, are we okay with that definition? Or do you want to table it? Or do you want to change it?
I'm okay.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Hark. I've again requested that you include this in the SD zone. Hopefully, that has now occurred. Single-family dwelling in the commercial zones.
Which pretty much every commercial zone has a single-family zone.
The only zone that doesn't, really?
WF20.
And LI.
LI. WF20 is actually not a single-family home. It's not permitted use in the waterfront district, but every other district is.
Yes. Park is now in SVVD.
And again, you were going to have here include your definition of family in here, right? That was one of the issues there. You were going to sort of cross-reference family as defined because you wanted the single-family dwelling to reference to your definition of family? Does anyone else remember that?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, I remember.
Okay.
Correct.
So, are we okay then with single-family dwelling in the commercial zones?
Can we just open, have it for every zone?
I would not allow it in every zone, and here's why. If you allow a residential use in a zone, you open up that zone for affordable housing. So, if you want your waterfront district used for affordable housing, that's up to you. But right now, affordable housing is ineligible in your zone.
Yeah. That's a whole larger discussion. But it's going to be forced on us anyways, but...
Yeah. I think leaving it for now because those are the bigger issues we can address. Right now, it's just like, is it okay just as a technical fix?
Yes.
Fair enough. Tourist home. A private residence that is used for temporary lodging or accommodation, typically for travelers, tourists, or other short-term guests. The tourist home provides sleeping accommodations and may include accessory services such as meals or recreational facilities, but is not operated as a commercial hotel or motel.
So, just to break this down, this is Airbnb, is it a version?
Well, really, when it was originally drafted, there was no Airbnb. It was originally...
I know, I said that's the idea, but we're talking hardware.
Yes. It really was designed for SVVD. So, Paul, you wanted to jump in?
No. I just wanted to say, I think it's that along with my old-fashioned bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
Well, bed and breakfast is sort of a separately defined item.
Right.
And right now, I got to tell you, I'm not regulating Airbnb in any zone. So, we have Airbnbs that are not in sound view, and I'm not trying to regulate them. So, just keep in mind that that's, as a matter of just policy...
Do we even need that definition?
Yeah. What's the difference between tourist home and Airbnb?
Well, you don't have a definition.
Sorry, not Airbnb, bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast, that's a differently defined term, right?
Yes.
Okay. Bed and breakfast, you specifically have to own and stay there, live there. While tourist home, you don't.
I don't.
Okay? So, yeah, Airbnb is designed for people who live in the house and rent out a portion of it.
So, does this, does this in a backhanded way say that all Airbnb in every other zone is now illegal?
You're right. Well, but it already was. Because the tourist home was already a term in our regs and already only allowed in the SVVD.
Was it defined in this way?
It was not defined. No, it was an undefined term.
So, that's my point would be that by doing this and saying it's only allowed in the SVV zone and defining it that way, we are backhandedly eliminating all Airbnb in every other zone. And I don't think that's what we're making...
Well, should we then table this till...
Yes.
Okay. Let's table. Let's table. Okay?
Maybe we'll put it in Phase 2.
Phase 2. Okay?
Eric, is single, going back to respect the single families, is that in the parking lot to look at?
Well, it was in the parking lot to see whether you wanted in the all your commercial zones or not.
Yeah. Okay. It should be there.
Then everyone seemed to agree it should be there. We moved on from there.
I mean, it should be in Phase 2. I think we should be talking about it, but not...
Okay. Veterinary hospital versus veterinary clinic and the difference between those. You guys had some issues related to that.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't cutting out anybody's business that currently services either of those industries.
I don't think that we are.
We have veterinary hospital and we have veterinary clinic. We have both of them.
The only problem I have with a veterinary clinic is where it limits it to small animals because you have vets who...
Service.
Service large animals, like horses and cows that go door to door. I don't know if we have horses and cows in town.
We do.
I'm assuming we do.
And we have goats.
I just go in...
But they don't go to the facility. That's what, that's the whole conversation we had, but they don't bring a horse to the clinic. Their, the doctor or specialist is going to the farm.
Well, as big as a goat does go to the facility.
Yeah.
In the back of my car.
So, who would a goat be a small animal? You, I was just, no, I'm just, you were saying cows and horses. So, I don't think a climate is large or...
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, I...
Mary just...
Somebody, somebody could put a horse in a trailer and go to a clinic if they need to.
Well, and that also could be the hospitals, that could be their place of business, right? And even though they make house calls, they could still need to call themselves hospitals.
Clinics are usually for things like vaccines or something where you're doing a whole clinic on one thing, you know, so, you know.
So, do we just not want to distinguish between the two?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know why we have to say small. I guess was my point.
I think one was outpatient and one was now.
Clinic is outpatient, no boarding.
Yeah. Yeah. One's an outpatient, one's like, I just don't think we need to say small.
So, let's not say small. How about that? Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
We're still a rural community.
Okay.
Yeah. That's fine.
Delete "small." Okay?
Yep.
That's easy enough to do.
Small.
Okay. So, accessory apartments, again, presently just in RU-80, RU-40. I think the discussion on moving into other zones probably has to wait.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Commercial vehicle parking. Again, I think that was you, Michael.
Yeah, that was. I feel that's a pretty broad subject matter for the commercial zone and the industrial zone. I don't know if you guys agree the same way. But my concern is that we regulate our commercial zone so much where commercial vehicles, that commercial property is not payable to the county. So, I don't know if anyone's supportive of moving that to a later date.
Yeah. Did we change anything?
So, that is a new definition.
Okay.
So, we have a...
I mean, honestly, the only, the entirety of the definition is the accessory parking of a commercial vehicle. That's the definition.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure we're making much of a change here, but if you want to park it to Phase 2...
No, I mean, so, what is it? I'm sorry. And before it was undefined, right?
Yes.
It's allowed as a right in RU-80, RU-40, R-20, R-15, R-10, MFR-80, MFR-40, MFR-20.
Okay. So, again, the definition, the entire definition is the accessory parking of a commercial vehicle.
Of a commercial vehicle.
Okay.
And you had, we had already changed the numbers.
Is the intent that that's...
Remember that? Because that was initially, the size was of concern.
Yeah, yeah. That was a separate issue.
Right. That's already, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that changed.
Okay. So, we're going to say that that's okay then? We're going to go forward with that then? Okay.
To Mary Jo's question, were you suggesting that it was a...
Well, it says a...
A.
A.
It's ambiguous.
Yeah.
If it's intended to be a single, but not two, then it should be one.
Are you supporting it because it's one?
No, I am not. I am not. It just says, I wanted to see if everybody else had any issue with it. I just said, "A."
What do you think there, Eric?
I mean, I see Mary Jo's point that it's a commercial vehicle. Do we actually want to say of commercial vehicles plural as accessory? I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on this or...
This is every residential zone.
Exactly.
What do you think, Tyce? Unlimited in one number.
Well, or do you want to put a number? Do you want to say...
We should not have unlimited.
Okay. Do you want to say no more than or...
I think that's a substantive change.
I would agree.
Okay. So, that's it. Now, get moved to Phase 2 for...
Number of vehicles.
For vehicle number. Okay? So, that moves us to accessory buildings. Okay. Which I have is age 193 on my version.
accessory buildings.
So, that wasn't a change.
No.
There is some change.
Yeah.
It's in lock-in definitions.
Yeah. It wasn't, we didn't change the definition.
What's that? Accessory buildings.
But maybe, maybe you were looking at, we needed to do something?
Yeah. There was new building definitions being introduced that are accessory. So, there are accessory farm buildings, like private boathouse or dock. I don't think was in there previously.
Well, let's take a look.
Please, I enjoyed this.
Well, the only way to know for sure is, let's take a look. Definition, Section 4. Okay. Accessory building structure. So, let's compare. Building a structure in addition to a principal building which is clearly subordinate to and customarily incidental to and located on the same lot as the principal building and which is in character with the neighborhood. Yeah, I think you were questioning character, maybe? Any accessory building physically attached to the principal building shall be included as part of the principal building. Okay. The term, I don't think, changed at all. It's the same definition. I know Michael Foliano was concerned about character at some point. I don't know if that's an issue here, but...
I don't think it's, because it specifies the character of the neighborhood, I don't think that's, I mean, we could put...
There's something about the single lots. Not only have condos that are split lots where you have the house on one side of the lot.
But again, that doesn't change. That is, the definition is the same.
No, I understand. Okay. So, what is the change?
Well, that's...
No, I'm just, I'm having a hard time to push this guy. It's just in my brain work. I apologize, everyone, for slowing me down. But this list, I'm having a hard time understanding, looking back and forth. So, what are we looking at and what are we trying to...
Okay.
The challenge entry.
Thank you.
I, the definitions on 190, but you, I have to open up two versions so I can have one on the Use Table and one on the...
I think that's probably why I'm...
I got a third review with the old reds.
Okay.
So, at least at this point...
No. I put the red book in.
Says accessory build D, not build E. So, the only change I can find so far.
Yeah. And it's allowed in every zone, so that... Yeah, and it's allowed in every zone, so the definition hasn't changed and it's allowed in every zone, so I'm not sure.
I just thought there was other uses that are allowed.
With an asterisk, meaning that it's allowed, it's the principal use that you can be accessory to. That's what the asterisk means.
Okay, so are we going to just move forward with this point, or?
Yep.
Okay, great, garage, next one.
Structure designed for the storage of motor vehicles, bicycles, or other personal property. It allows you to be attached to or detached from a principal building.
Thank you.
I think we should remove the word motor, just to leave it as vehicle. Because there's other types of vehicles that don't have motor.
Like?
Like a trailer.
That could be personal property. Other personal property.
See, I mean, everything's pretty much covered there.
Yeah.
It's in every zone.
Yeah, but like a.
A what, what's not personal property?
No, I guess, yeah, but I just, why, what's the purpose of defining motor in a vehicle as opposed to vehicle? So, you must pass a horse and buggy in there, right, it's a vehicle.
Because sometimes if you name something and you can't exclude it, so.
I, I, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time worrying about this, folks, I, I would just say move on if it's not that big a deal.
I think it's fine.
Okay, let's move on then to private boathouse or dock.
Boathouse or dock in all zones.
A structure located adjacent to a water body used for non-commercial docking or storage of watercraft, watercraft equipment, and related accessories.
So, I guess the non-commercial part, right, so you can have a commercial fisherman who's parking at their dock within their repair area, right? But they were a commercial fisherman, so I have a problem with that part.
But it's not private, it's not commercial, it's.
No, but like you can still have private property, you can be.
A boathouse.
A boathouse, a private property, right?
That you store your commercial fishing boathouse?
You park your commercial fishing boathouse. Your dock, it's not just a building, right, it's dock too. It's the finding, it's his dock, well.
So, the, so the question is, you know, the question is, can you use it yourself for private use? Your own fishing vehicle vessel versus allowing other people to use it, which would make it a commercial use of the dock, right? So.
The thing with dock is that like, it doesn't.
Because it's for, because it's for non-commercial docking, not, it doesn't say you can't.
So, if you have.
Use it yourself.
Yeah, so if, if you're, if you're bringing your commercial fishing, um, watercraft to your private dock, just to dock it there, but you're not, it's not for a commercial purpose, it's just because you finished work and you drove your boat home, then that would seem to be allowed. This is more if you operate your business out of your private dock.
Yeah, which I, I think, see the premise is zoning ends at the high timeline, the knee-high water vehicles to a certain line, so.
Well, that's why it's structured located adjacent to the water body.
Yeah, but, yeah, but a dock is not adjacent to a water body.
Well, it has to, again, on the side of the property, we, we regulate anything above CJL, right?
I understand that.
So, a portion of the dock is on our, in our jurisdiction for any.
Not, not all docks are attached to the open.
Okay, then when we don't cover, we don't cover.
We don't regulate that.
Okay.
Then we don't regulate, it's not, it's.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Okay.
Yeah, so we don't, you don't have to worry about what you're thinking, is that somebody has parked their commercial fishing vessel out in the river somewhere, but not in our zone.
Got it.
But when they're walking out of that vessel and trying to get customers to go onto that vessel from the land, then they would, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's good.
Okay, you all right with it now?
Okay.
So, that was a good one.
So, next one, trailer construction, uh, storage office.
Yeah, I think most of these next ones are on here.
That didn't change, so, were you concerned about a table?
Yeah, I think so.
It's not defined.
Yeah, this is a new definition.
It's, oh, I see.
Which, which definition?
No, it wasn't a new definition, it has, it's, it's in black, it's.
It's in black.
It didn't change.
They're, they're all in black.
All three definitions starting with trailer are in black.
Yeah.
Trailer temporary storage and that.
Yep, in black.
Just confirm it while we're sitting here.
And they're in all, they're in all the residential zones, they're in multifamily residential. And. Trailer construction, it's in all zones, every single zone is allowed with a zoning permit.
Yeah, they're, they're already in my existing definitions.
These two aren't in the SVV D, are you caring about that? The other two aren't. Trailer construction storage offices allowed in the residential zones and, but the other two aren't. Trailer permanent storage.
It's only trailer.
I, I'm trying to like make it something that's not a name.
It would just sound you, I think it would register mine with the SV and then a DD.
Well, I'm like, I'm like, you know what, he's gonna laugh when I say this, but I just keep going, NABD when I see that. So, my whole brain just explodes when I see SVDD.
The other two are only in the.
Commercial industrial special zones.
The, the trailer permanent storage and trailer temporary storage.
But they're not in the.
They're not in residential zones.
No, they're, they're in six, commercial industrial special zones.
Yeah.
But are they in the waterfront zone?
The only place they're not is sound view.
Waterfront.
They're, they're.
Yeah.
The waterfront.
They're in every place out.
Yeah, they're both in, in double decline.
Yeah.
Are we good with all those then, or?
Now, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Accessory motor vehicle service.
That is allowed only in LI eighty.
And what was the definition?
It says motor vehicle service conducted as an accessory used to the principal use.
Is that where a business actually repairs its, um, equipment aside?
Yeah, it's only equipment.
That have to be for profit?
Well, remember, it's accessory motor vehicle service, so.
Right. So, it's basically the use with an accessory use of the motor vehicle service, not related.
Well, it is, the definition, you just mentioned motor vehicle service is conducted as an accessory used to the principal use.
So, does anybody have any problem with that being only in LI eighty?
So, it's only allowed in LI eighty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
No, you don't have a problem with it, or what, what's the no for?
I have, I have no problem.
Okay.
I think it should be considered for the commercial zone.
Okay, that's gonna be a phase two issue though.
Okay, so we could put that.
So, phase.
Let's put phase two and why we're putting it in phase two.
You, I'm adding in for commercial zone. Yeah, I, I'm trying to add in, when we're moving to commercial zone, so are we moving it to phase two, why, what are you getting in phase two?
Okay, yeah.
Okay? Okay, so that's.
Commercial vehicle parking.
Commercial vehicle parking.
That is allowed in waterfront, in C ten, C thirty, LI eighty, SD, and SVVD.
And we already talked about that above, if you look up the page here, it says phase two for vehicle number, right?
Right.
So, that, that part is already going to phase two.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't.
Because the definition also says a commercial vehicle.
Yeah, that's, so we're in the same, we already had this discussion tonight, I don't think we need to have it twice.
Okay.
Okay?
So, phase two for.
So, home occupation. This is a really lengthy definition.
We've got a new definition.
Well, I mean.
Was red new, or was that, what is red?
Red is new.
Red is new.
Red is new, because there was some that were edited, and I can't remember which ones was new and which ones wasn't.
Purple had some word smitten.
Okay, the existing discussion is home occupation customary, and it's a different definition than what you've got here.
This is one of the ones that says, you know, which include but are not limited to, so it kind of gives examples, if you just keen at.
I, I think the home occupation, I don't know if we should specify residential building or lot, because there's commercial.
It says residential building.
Well, for residential.
Yeah, it says residential building or lot.
Yeah, because you have residential buildings in commercial zones.
Correct.
Okay, so you should, you can have home occupation even in a commercial zone if it's a residential building. We don't want, we don't want home occupations in commercial buildings, that's the goal there.
The definition is for home occupation.
Yeah, my only concern was is that it specified residential building.
Doesn't say residential zone, it says residential building, so if the building uses it, or a lot.
Or a lot. Yeah, so a lot is land, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it's zoned that way, if you have a resident, you can have other stuff happening on a lot that with a, with a primary use of that lot is residential.
What I guess I'm getting at is if you have a commercial lot or if you got a primary use of commercial use, but they live there. But it's a residential lot, it's a non-conforming commercial lot.
Non-conforming is not what we're regulating, you can't regulate.
No, no, I, no, what I'm saying, if you have an existing business on a commercial lot.
Yeah, but let's not explode your head, I hate your exploding head. If it's non-conforming, we're not regulating.
No, I, I'm not, I'm saying, I'm saying is, it's like you, you can have a house in a commercial zone.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't be considered a home occupation.
Oh, sure would.
It would be, okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
But, well, you can't have is a mixed use with, with a home occupation, because mixed use is only allowed in one zone right now. So, if it's mixed use, it is by definition non-conforming and we're not getting into the middle of that, okay?
I, I have a question on this one, I mean, again, in some cases, we've said we're okay with just putting in a generic and other personal property. And in this one, we put home occupation, and there's kind of a random list of what constitutes home occupation, even though it then also says and others. So, why are we saying like home preserves, right? But, like, why do we have to have it be so long?
Well, because that, that part actually is taken from the existing reg. Home occupation includes but are not limited to, the existing reg specifies preparation and sale of those products customarily produced in the home or garden and actually produced in the subject home or garden, such as baking and home preserves, preparation and sale of products of arts and crafts actually prepared on the subject premises, such as sewing, painting, woodcarving, cabinet making, ceramics, writing, sculpture, ornamental glass.
So, he actually did reduce it a lot?
This is shorter for me in there, right?
This is shorter than it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so then I guess my question is.
Could be for shorter.
Does it do, is there, what is the rationale between having all of these?
There's no legal rationale, other than we're trying to give what we think are typical examples we'd like to see there. Uh, but there's no, I mean.
I mean, all these aren't actually happening now.
And it might be from the, it might be from the state.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
No, there's no state reg on this now, home occupation is entirely locally regulated.
Yeah, I mean, I think the extent of the content of this is based off, if you think about all the businesses now, also supposed to be shorted that exist, right?
Yeah, but then, but there's also, I mean, I have a home occupation in my house and it's not listed here. Right, so, so there's also gonna be, just for every one of these that's listed, there's also gonna be stuff happening in town that's not.
Yes, that, that's not listed, absolutely.
But I still think you need the types, because that's how somebody expands it to the next thing, so is it.
Yeah, I mean, again, you can sort of look at this and say, oh, I'm similar enough to these that I, I have a home occupation. Though, honestly, do you have home occupation permits for what you do? Probably not.
No.
So, there you go, that's, so, do I want to make you come in and get one now that you told me you have, probably not. But I mean, if you have an actual doctor's office or somebody who's coming to see you at your home.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's generally what we're trying to catch you.
So, okay, I'm just saying then, I, I don't know.
I, I know what you're saying, it's a incomplete list, and why do we have some and not others?
Right, and, and also, I mean, just kind of like to the point of like, again, if we're trying to project out, are there, then is there, to your point, is there danger in having such a comprehensive list that's still not capturing, you know, emerging potential of home occupation?
No, because I think that's how somebody in Eric's role decides whether he has to come through the commission or not.
Yeah, but ultimately, for me, when I, when someone comes in, I kind of look at the list and say, is this similar enough to something on my list that I can say, yes, it's, it's a home occupation, I'm okay with it. If it's totally different than anything on my list, at that point, I, I come back to you and say, guys, we don't capture this, you know, in our reg. Sort of like I did with the.
Okay, so then, then, then pulling at our human, then are we comfortable that this is enough? Like then, if we're gonna, if it has to be similar enough to the list, then do we need to expand the list? And so that you don't have to say, well, there's nothing on here that looks.
I don't really do that.
No, no, that can't come, you can't.
Yes.
I think he's been very successful, I think he was successful in using this today.
So, let's pray, let's pray.
He's a very good person.
Yeah, now you're.
And remote, there's, there's hundred percent remote jobs are a significant part of the economy right now. And places like Irvine are very attractive for that.
So, how do we solve that, if I add a remote work?
I don't know, that's what I'm, like, I'm trying to say.
The point is, though, right now, ninety percent of the people doing that don't come in for home occupation permits, and chances are, I don't need them to. So, your business does not have a home occupation permit, I really don't want it to.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, because.
The reason we have.
Home, your home, your home owner.
Home occupation permits is for, again, if you're doing something that's taking up a significant chunk of your home, no more than a quarter.
So, where, but there's several things on here that no one's necessarily coming to your home for, so that, I'm not sure that that.
I think, I think the general idea.
You're running class. I guess that would fall under schools, but forgetting that.
But I mean, the, the.
Writing, why is writing on here then? That is, who's coming to your house for writing?
Nobody.
No, no, no one, but I guess.
So, then that.
But I mean, the, the, where it becomes important, I guess, is how much of your house are we talking about? Ultimately, the reg is designed for no more than a quarter of your house being used.
Yeah, exactly, I, I totally agree with that.
So, that, that's, we have a whole separate reg for home occupation and it limits it to twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
So, if you're worried about some emerging field that's gonna take up a chunk of your house, we can talk about including.
So, these, we're saying that these are accessory uses that take up more than twenty-five percent of your house?
No, we're worried about that, we're worried.
I respect what you're saying, but with all due respect, with all due respect.
No, no, I understand.
Everything you guys keep coming back to is, is not covered in here. So, you're still not convincing me why it has to have this full list, I'll drop it and I'm gone if everyone else is okay with it.
But if there's change you want to see added to, I think now would be a perfect time to do that, if you think virtual should be listed, then I think then.
I was just trying to understand why this is, it's a somewhat random list.
Yeah, so, if I.
And why, and why we have to have so many here when literally five minutes ago, we had a conversation that was like perfectly fine with saying and other personal property.
Okay, I, I do want.
I was trying to.
The only caveat I'm gonna give you is this, if we take out this definition and we revert back to the pre-existing definition, it's twice as long.
I see, that's what I'm saying, I'm actually saying, but it's fine, I'll edit it.
Sure, sure, but maybe it could be.
But, but, so, I, I, I need to go back to Francisco with what language is going to be in the reg that we're going to propose to adopt? So, if this isn't it, I accept it's not it.
Then we have to propose something.
We, we have to propose something, okay, okay.
Yes, I agree, Eric, that's what I was putting out of the discussion, but if, this is just Mary Gardner's view, if, if others are like, no, this is fine, we can move on.
So, what, what I feel is.
Just like Michael has been gracious to do earlier, I'm more than happy to process it.
I mean, I think it's fine that we edited it down just because it was very wordy. It wasn't just a longer list, it was just wordy and clunky, and I think that's a great edit to it. If we want, and I wouldn't say necessarily put it in phase two, but one of the things that during phase two, if we wanna get back into, because we know there's things happening with home occupation, we can discuss it then.
Okay, well.
But also, if we are saying that he's bringing us best practices, is, is it correct to assume that he has used this definition with other talented best practices?
I'm guessing so, but I'll tell you what, I think the answer, I think the answer is this. Why don't we adopt this, but then just say we'll revisit it in phase two to have a further discussion about it then?
If we, if we know that right, I would suggest that we add a class of home occupations that I'd be teaching. Whether it's a music teacher that brings a student into their sit in their parlor and.
That's a whole, I think we have.
We, we have a separate category for home.
That's a whole good, yeah, that's a whole good thing.
Is the addition.
Why isn't that home occupation too?
Does the existing definition have repair of internal combustion engines within a workshop?
Not a licensed school, just someone who teaches or, or music or tours.
It's all excluded, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
Yes, it, it does.
It does, okay. That was already excluded in your.
Home occupation, a lot of times you're having deliveries made and that type of thing. So, or you're shipping, doing a lot of shipping or those types of things that also.
Repair internal.
Not with, not with, I'm sorry, to me, not with half of the things on this list.
People who are doing baking, home preserves.
If you're doing writing, you're not doing a lot of shipping?
Writing, writing, what, what do you mean you're not shipping? How do you know what people are doing?
Cause it's all electronic.
It is not, not electronic when you bring up books that are going out. My sister's a writer, this is what she does.
I know, so is my husband, and I never, it's mine.
It's not all, it's not all, it's, it.
It's fine.
We're not writing articles. When you write books, you have shipping going.
I know, it has been written thirty, I gather. But I'm just saying that this is, it's fine. I'm, I'm going to withdraw my comment.
Well, no, I, I think the right answer, honestly, Mary Gardner, is let's adopt this. We can, again, have further discussions about it in phase two. If we think we're not capturing this, we need to further revise it at that point. But let's, rather than have the pre-existing definition, which is longer and clunkier, let's shorten it down to this and then we'll come back and talk about it again in phase two.
And why don't we ask Francisco what he's seen from other towns?
What he's seeing is what he's introducing, I would imagine.
Well, I will go back and ask him again.
That's why he's providing his best practice.
No, I want, I want to have a discussion. And I also am going to be respectful of the majority's views on this.
Now, a discussion, but get ready, because it is a, a different view. You're, this is the kind of thing that you'd like to have.
Yeah.
You can sit at home in your home occupation and occupy yourself by.
Thank you.
That's very generous of you.
Do the new thing, because.
Okay.
I'm having a cookie on that one, let, everybody mind.
No, I have, I have.
Well, let's, let's go to the next one, and, okay. Laboratory or laundry facility is accessory to a marine facility. See, remarkably.
So this one's in purple.
It was moved from a different part of the reg.
So who just accept that one?
Yeah. Yeah.
But, but also the discussion in phase two.
I miss a comment that brings up. Guys are very clear about what you're willing to talk about again.
Mary, come on.
I would talk about it again, I just want to move forward now.
Uh, I, I will say that, I don't, I'm not so worried about moving forward as fast as everybody else is personally.
Michael, we've been working on these since August.
So what, they take sometimes years.
Yeah.
And we'll be waiting for another two.
Some of these are already defined and they've been moved from one part of the document to the other, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, no, we're not assigning after what we're doing. We're not just moving things from one place to the other, we're introducing new information, new.
You're right, but.
The grab ones, yes.
But the point is that we're, we, when we adopt this next year, we still have two more years to go on phase two. So if there's something that really turns out to be problematic, we will not abandon the opportunity to revisit it later. We will always have the opportunity to revisit and phase two is going to be nothing but wrapping our arms around impossible problems, including.
I just want to add, I kind of, I, it kind of irks me when, to hear you say that we're pushing this, that we're pushing it too fast. If you really, really felt that way, then you should have brought the definition between August and November.
Oh, really?
Yes.
She's feeling the same way, huh?
I feel, that's better.
So.
For you, but most of these, I have to say, you tabled.
Absolutely, I agree, you're right, absolutely, I do. And I'm trying my best to make sure I can engage everybody in this room, as well as people.
All right, so I don't.
But you need to bring us something more if you want that.
Right, you need to bring, we're also working with a consultant who is bringing us best practices. That are, that are happening in towns and cities around. So unless you can come up with something that says, this is better and it's better because. We have to go with what Francisco says or is suggesting to us and move forward. Nothing is ever perfect, nothing will ever be perfect.
And I must say, the difference between you and Mary Gardner's perspective. Mary's working with the definition we have and asking what else we can add or subtract. You have not submitted any additional changes to these. You keep saying like, I don't think it works. Okay, then give us some information.
Yeah, so I'm not, I don't think that this table is qualified to make that determination on a lot of these definitions.
That's what we were elected to do.
No, I understand we were elected to do that, doesn't mean that we are able to really do that.
We are qualified, we have to. We are qualified, this is our job. Whether we do a good job, I don't know, but we are qualified.
Yeah, but when you start, this evening, Paul, when we started this, your specific comment about, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so maybe you can repeat it, so I don't misquote you. But into Mary, Mary's point here, she felt she was trying to discuss something, you guys wanted to move on, she's withdrawing in that comment. I'm not Steven Corry, but that's just my observation of this moment. And she felt that she didn't have the time to talk about it. I'm not, did you or did you not? I, I just.
Okay, and, and once again, folks, I think we're getting sidetracked over procedural things as opposed to substantive things. And I think, honestly, my, my, my next step is laboratory or laundry facility is accessory to a marine facility. And I, I would like to just pick that up and see why it's being tabled. It's a relocated definition. It says laboratory or laundry facility is accessory to a marine facility. That's, that's the whole definition. So, I'm not sure what we need to hold it for, or if there's, what the issue is, why it's on the table.
It is permitted in WF twenty. But not in C ten, C thirty, LI eighty, SD or S D.
Exclusive.
So, so is, is that the reason?
A little long, can we?
A little long, okay, okay on that one.
Letting of rooms.
That's probably very old, sounds like it.
It's in red.
Same time as you could.
A building where lodging and or meals are provided to long-term, i.e. non-transient residents only for compensation. Utilizing one central kitchen facility expressly excluding cooking facilities in any guest room. Letting of rooms shall be conducted in a residence occupied by the owner of the building as a permanent residence. And all elements of the use shall be confined to the principal building on a lot.
So letting of rooms is allowed in all residential zones and C ten and C thirty.
And honestly, I can't remember anyone ever coming to me to ask permission to let a room out in their house.
Nope.
So, I, I, I'm not sure why we're regulating it, but if it's allowed in everybody's zone anyway, I, I'm just as happy to leave it there.
What was the change in, in reg? We changed it, what was it called before?
I don't think we had a definition for it before. It was in the regs or something that we regulated, but we didn't have a definition for it.
Oh, okay, we didn't have a definition, we just have a letting of rooms, okay. I was just wondering, because the definition is in black saying there was, as if something was there, but the. Part is in red, so I just wondered if I.
Well, in, in the definitions piece at least, I don't have a definition for it, and maybe.
That's a good point, I don't think, yeah, that we noticed that before.
I know, I was just wondering, you know, if there was a whole new definition or.
Well, I mean, I can try and see if.
I'm looking in that current reg.
It probably wasn't, it wasn't defined.
Okay. So, are we?
I was wondering if it was a, if they, if they had a definition, they called it something else, like, I don't know, renting of rooms or something.
I know, that's just.
Boarding house, that would have been the typical boarding house.
Okay, so are we okay with letting of rooms?
I'm okay.
Was it called the board? Is that what it said before, board house?
Yeah.
Ah, so they took, so they took out the word boarding house, okay. That's a change.
Which was a defined term, by the way. Um, and boarding house is exactly the definition you just read.
So why do we, uh. I'm sorry, mine, that's good.
So do we have boarding, but what I'm saying is, is boarding house in the new regs or is that in?
No, I think we turned, we changed boarding house into letting of rooms.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
There's no boarding house definition.
Yes, exactly. That's what I thought.
Okay.
Boarding of horses, right.
That's a whole different.
Okay, yeah, that, well, boarding of people, boarding of horses, a little different.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Board of the manger, yes, okay, um, off street parking.
That can be a good thing one.
Off street parking.
Well, let's not touch that one until after we look at the new zoning rights that will pass. Oh, boy.
Off street parking is an accessory to, in every zone.
Okay, I mean, is it, are we okay with it?
It's not on here?
It was, I was, yeah, it, it was parked, so we got to figure out, are we unparking it or what are we doing with it?
Yeah, we're heading to unpark it.
Unpark it.
Okay.
Okay, outdoor recreational facilities.
How do we just do this?
So that's allowed in C ten and C thirty.
Is there anything?
And it's allowed in all, with all the residential zones.
Yeah, we start, we had that conversation earlier this evening.
Okay, then let's go past it.
It's just allowed in C ten and C thirty at present.
And all the residential zones.
Yeah, I'm just reading what comes with the paper.
Okay. Outdoor storage of goods.
Okay, allowed in all residential zones. Not.
All right, well, uh.
I think the issue here was that the outside storage of goods is an accessory use to the principal use. So you can't have outdoor storage of goods as a principal use.
Right, that's what we experienced with, um, storage facilities.
Are we okay with that term then, that we keep, we do not want outdoor storage of goods as a principal use?
Correct.
Are we, are we allowing that everywhere?
Yeah, as accessory to the principal use.
Yeah, so like you can't have a commercial piece of land and have other products to sell more than one?
No, you can, i- if you have sale of goods in the building, you're allowed to have outdoor storage of goods as an accessory use to that. But you can't have the outdoor storage of goods as the principal use on that set. So you, you're not going to have essentially a gravel or whatever operation where the principal thing you're doing is storing that stuff outside on the lot.
I'm thinking like, it's like, do you have a big garden landscape center?
Then it's, the outdoor stuff is accessory to presumably.
Okay, but you're making an example out of all the road, uh, I drink a guy. That's outside storage of goods.
We consider that retail sale. We, we regulated that as retail sale.
Okay, just want to make sure or not.
Okay.
And that's not, he wasn't storing, he was displaying merchandise.
And he explicitly said, I'm not going to store anything here. If it's here, it's to use in the retail aspect of the business. Yeah.
Outside storage.
Okay, um, recreational vehicle or trailer parking.
They decided to have a problem.
C ten and C thirty, that's allowed as accessory.
But it's not allowed, there was one of these, I think we made that change already, um, but it wasn't allowed in the waterfront zone.
No, it's not allowed in the waterfront zone on my.
All right.
As an accessory.
Every residential.
So it's not, it's not WF twenty?
Not, right? I think so. So we need to change that.
Well, 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 read the definition. The definition is the parking of a vehicle or trailer used for vacation travel, camping, or similar recreational uses. So this is not commercial trailer parking, this is RV parking.
Are you thinking a boat trailer is a similar recreational use?
Well, it says, if I'm not mistaken, it was something specific to the trailers. It's because I was like, why can't, I'm not allowed, I'm not permitted per these regulations to park a trailer on, and a RV. Can't have more than one starter, so you can't have a camper and a trailer, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I don't think that's the case.
Is there a differentiation between a trailer as something that you put something else on versus a trailer that is the. Is the unit, like a camper trailer, which is towed versus a recreational vehicle which is self-powered, is that?
Yeah, so, yeah, I would imagine.
But, but I see where you're going. It's not something you put something else on.
Correct.
Yeah, so just do we need to expand that definition to clarify, or clarify the definition?
Okay, we have language we want to contemplate here. I'm, I'm happy to add whatever language people think.
I guess, yeah, I guess the idea was like, this is, you know, obviously, to this point, a boat trailer versus pulling a camper trailer, right? And recreational vehicle would be that it's a vehicle that, that, you know, like a camper van.
Well, it, it talks about recreational vehicle or trailer part, so you can have the trailer piece of it, as long as it's used for vacation, travel, camping, or similar recreational uses. So, I don't think it's prohibited from having the recreational trailer there. It's part of the definition.
Yeah, so where, is it limited?
No, I don't think it's prohibited, but it's not clearly differentiated from the other use of a trailer. It's just, you put something else on and take it somewhere else.
Correct. So how do we fix that?
Well, I'm just looking at the other definitions where we mentioned trailer, like the trailer temporary storage. We have vehicle container object excluding buildings used for storage of goods or materials, which is designed to be moved on its own wheels, flatbed, or other trailer. Which trailer is located on the same lot and will be there in six hundred days. So it's on its wheels, flatbed, would that be helpful?
Well, in, in that particular case, the, it's more of the box as opposed to what the box is being carried on. Well, here, the trailer is the actual, the gear that you're putting it on. So it's a, it's a different idea of what a trailer is. Uh, we, maybe that, in that case, it needs to be storage unit or whatever you want to call it there. Um, because we're sort of using the term trailer to mean different things in different places.
Listen, we're not like making up something that doesn't exist already, so I'm sure there's a best practice out there for it.
Yeah.
We don't have to ask, we don't have to come up with it on our own.
Okay, well, let's, let me ask him to investigate that issue.
It'd be something like a recreational vehicle, either self-propelled or towed.
Right.
Okay, let me ask you to investigate that first.
Yeah, great.
Okay?
And, and also, I think the, talk about parking, like permanent parking versus temporary parking, because I think definitely you'd get into trouble. On that definition.
Um, that is bad.
If it's. You're saying we need to put permanent or temporary?
I don't know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Because I mean, if it's, if you have an, own an RV, you should be able to park it next to your house three or four days a year.
Yeah, I agree. That's what I'm concerned about is, my interpretation when I read it is that you couldn't park your camper and your boat at your house at the same time. Because there was language in here that basically said so. Um, no one would want.
Well, I mean, in, in practice, Michael, I've never, if, if you've got a key, a trailer and your boat in the yard. I don't know, any CEO would try and regulate that, isn't it?
Does it say only what?
It just says A.
A.
Oh, I see, A.
So we're going to ask person.
Yeah, I, I just say investigate next to this.
I guess, yeah, I would investigate, and, and maybe, maybe getting into that, you know, personal use versus commercial use or something. Just look at how we should do that.
Okay, I, I will go back to him in the morning and talk to him about that.
But I also know people don't, you know, people are very concerned about people, you know, using trailers as permanent housing.
Yeah, I mean, honestly.
That's already prohibited.
In only, it's prohibited in your current regulations, given three separate locations. It is literally the only thing that has prohibited three separate kinds in your regulation.
Not porn, but that or.
Yeah.
So I guess my main concern with your point was just that.
Okay.
There's all kinds of business people, what I'm concerned about with only changes is that we have this role character with a lot of people who work from home with their businesses. I don't want to regulate them out of, of business.
But that's what I think that this parking, that's like, that, you know, it's like, I, I think we need to think about. I mean, you know, I'm looking at it more that it's personal use via, you know, vehicles and. I mean, you know, I'm looking at it more that it's personal use via, you know, vehicles and trailers, not recreation. Cause it should be recreational, not something you're doing for business.
No, I understand.
But this same definition is in C-ten and C-thirties.
Well, because they have residential uses in those.
A recreational vehicle is a class of vehicle, it's not just.
Mr. Gomes, help, please help.
Yeah, I, I've got it listed as to investigate, so let's just move to the next i- issue here. I'm not sure we're gonna solve the problem tonight, it, it needs further investigation, okay? So we're back to section twenty-five now with definitions, commercial vehicle.
So, where, I don't see that in the definition.
Well, you have two different kinds of definitions, you have section twenty-five definitions and some section twenty-six definitions, so.
It says commercial part, uh, vehicle parking, accessory parking of a commercial vehicle.
My, my section twenty-five says, any motor vehicle with a commercial license plate or with lettering markings, racks, or other apparent accessories indicating it's intended for use other than personal indoor recreational transportation.
Oh, okay, a commercial vehicle, yeah, a parking piece.
That makes sense to me, as it's written.
Well, let's wait for, we'll catch up and see where we are.
I had the word or underlined, as if somebody was having a problem with the or.
Commercial vehicle parking, yeah, this is a, we had the weight issue which we took care of.
You're, you're in a different place, you're not in the right place.
Commercial.
Yeah, no, I'm just, in my head, my, my thought process might be.
Oh, okay, I, I.
No, he, he might be saying I'm in the right page, but my thoughts are on the wrong page.
Cause you're talking about commercial vehicle parking, and that's a different issue, we already covered.
We're under definitions now.
Yeah, we're under definitions now.
What you were worrying about, that not everybody gets a commercial plate.
Yeah, so you have, they get combined plates.
I underlined or, because it's, there's vehicles without commercial plates would be the, the other two ors. Or with lettering marking, uh, racks or other.
It was the, that, that vehicles actually do get commercial plates, like a car is a commercial plate and a truck, right? So if you have a work truck and a work car, you can't have them both at the lot at the same time, cause it's more than one. Is that?
But that's on the parking issue, we're just talking about the actual, how you define a commercial vehicle. So essentially saying, which we call, which we call the.
I got it, yeah, okay, I see it now.
Okay, so are we checking that ones going forward here, is that?
As far as definition, yes.
This guy said he needed us to do it, so now we're, he's saying, okay.
Detached structure.
What's a party wall?
That means two people living on side of one wall. It's like a townhouse, you know.
Okay, but it says common wall, then a comma, party wall?
Party wall, that's what it's, that's what.
So they're basically the same thing, okay, I thought maybe it was like, someone's having a party on one side and not inviting the other side.
You just wanna get invited, is that?
Yeah.
Parties.
Got it.
Okay, are we good with that, does anybody have any issues with it? Drainage.
Cause that was a new term, I know, that was, well, the purple's always moving.
Purple's removed, yep.
And the only, I think the, um, I have, it says the control removal, because, you know, there's natural drainage basins and whatever, so I guess I was just looking. And we could let this go for now, but, I just wanted to, I just had that, I was just looking at the idea of this natural drainage too, and to make sure we're not.
So would you wanna add in natural drainage, cause right now this is covered again by inclusive language or other means which includes runoff, it doesn't say, you know, limited to natural, so theoretically it's included.
I'm just wondering if it's like, rather than drainage, I'm just wondering if the term should be stormwater control, because drainage is, drain, so like, but I'm comfortable leaving it with now, or we can take, but, why don't you ask them about that?
Yeah, I think the way this is written assumes that all of the methods, including the casual or other means, all of which include controls.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, but when you.
Controls aren't an or, they're, they're included in every instance.
So in the bigger picture, then we talk about drainage basins, so that I'm, so of course I'm going there, so when they say drainage, I'm just looking at the whole drainage basin, and here it seems like it's more talking about stormwater control. So just see if maybe that, if that's something we should.
I, I have it marked down, I have to ask on the term there, is whether stormwater management or stormwater control.
So you would wanna include, you would wanna include drainage methods that do not include controls?
Yeah, it would, yeah, so I'm thinking, this is, I think he wants us to get to like, you gotta manage the stormwater.
Well, yeah, be important where that word appeared in the regulations.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I wanted to check, is like, can we enter, you know, are we talking about drainage, or are we talking about stormwater management?
Yeah, that's what you gotta ask Mr. Gomes.
The way this, this is worded, it's all controlled.
Yes, exactly, and it is.
Hey, I have it flagged, ask you about.
You know, the Connecticut River drains, just one, you know, we're not regulating, we're not regulating that. Well, so, but we have, but we have smaller books like that on people's property, so that's why I don't wanna necessarily say drainage is, I'd rather say stormwater control is, so that's why I'm just wondering how we use the term drainage in the right, and whether this is the right definition.
Okay, I have it flagged, I will ask him about it, we'll see what he says. The next one should be evergreen, not evergreen tree, but.
Evergreen, and, and we were wondering why it was twenty feet, if you recall.
Differentiate it from a bush.
Evergreen bush is not defined. So, is it because of the word evergreen, or is it because of the word tree?
These are the terms that are undefined, commercial vehicle, detached structure, drainage, evergreen tree.
It's defined.
Evergreen is, tree is defined, but the point is we say.
It's sort of weird.
But it's so weird that I don't know.
Evergreen is a tree that stays green all year long, that's, so, is it tree, this, the twenty feet, or is it, what was the?
Yeah, I think the twenty feet seems to be the problem. Because, you know, you get overwind that may not grow to be twenty feet, but are still evergreen.
I think my thing was more that it should not say coniferous, it should say, if you want an evergreen tree, you should say a non-deciduous, because larches are conifer trees, that lose their needles, so, there are conifer trees that lose their.
My expectation is the place where these, this word shows up is in buffers and other things that they're asking for trees, so they don't wanna, uh, a tree that's two feet tall as the buffer.
But I guess con, that would be, I don't know what to do.
Could you, could you ask him again, what the context of that is?
I was gonna look, I will look that up.
So why would he would need twenty feet or more?
Again, I suspect you're right, it's for buffering purposes.
Yeah, that, that's way of saying, look, don't give us a little twig and say, let's get to it.
I think the idea is we're trying to get something that, you know, has its leaves year-round, so that's why, because we've just had the discussion on. You can't say non-deciduous, you know, cause then it's like, okay, denim's fitted, you know.
The marions, right, I mean, you don't want an evergreen tree that's only this tall for the marions, right, cause then you still see the house or the evergreen tree.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, family.
Yeah, now, this family is the same family definition as within the original reg, right?
Yes, it should be. We told him to, I think, keep that definition.
Yeah.
Because yours was already modified, or like a better version of it?
We already had a fairly broad definition, I think we were happy.
One of the broadest in the area.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So are we keeping this, is there any?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought you part out, but it didn't happen.
Yeah, and it's, I can't cite anything specific, but I think we just wanna check it with, with state federal rights to just make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, it says the, the number, I got, the number six, you were saying you added the number six in there.
That's been there forever, that's, that's a very.
That's why we're redoing them.
Okay, well, let's, I will ask him about that number.
Well, and also, as Michael said, is there, like, is there a more up-to-date definition of family?
Well, would you like it to be higher or lower?
Well.
I would like to understand why it's the number six, just like you wanna understand why it's twenty feet for a.
No, I, well, I think I understand why it's six, because it's six unrelated people, you can have a thousand related people, but unrelated, that was for the beach areas.
Okay, I, I, let me see if there's a, a, a more.
So we're saying the seven people who are not related by blood, marriage, or adoption, when you're together as a single house.
So, what was that, what was the?
Now, mind you, things like group homes, whatever else.
Yeah.
Except those are separate, there's a Fair Housing Act, I can't really, that's, I can't do much about that.
Right.
But this is only for, again, non-Fair Housing Act situations.
So single-family residents will be the place where that appears, or multifamily, so, if you, if you want fewer than six, you're getting more to the traditional definition of a single family.
No, I, I don't, I, why, why do we put a number on it?
Well, because then it helps, allows him to regulate twenty.
But that would be because of family, that would.
Yeah, with unrelated, if they're unrelated and there's more.
If you have a single-family house, and you have twenty unrelated people living there,
Yeah.
theoretically, I can say, I'm sorry, this isn't a single-family use anymore, it's not a family, you're not a family if you're twenty people.
Yeah.
Unless they can demonstrate they're all related.
He's allowing a single family so that, let's say, a group of singles, you know.
Is there any federal shade range or?
Young adults.
I don't think there is.
No, I think this came from, from trying to regulate beach occupancy.
Completely understand that.
So I think they just picked six, so that it wasn't.
Well, it's a typical three-bedroom, and you have two people, like, you know, share a, you know, room or something like that, so.
I think it was just, it was picking a number to give the regulator an opportunity to be able to do something, cause if you don't have a number, and six doesn't cut against most normal arrangements, but if you said, you know, less than that, you might.
So, so I think it'd be good to check it, I think what I would say too, though, is check it, but.
In normal, a single-family home.
Yeah.
But it may be something that, because of some of the discussions and different types of families, that we really look at it in phase two, which is changing it, cause it is.
That's where we were, we were just gonna put it in phase two.
Yeah, but I, but, you know.
I just wanted to look.
Okay, well, then go back and ask about it, okay?
Yeah.
And six may be rational and historical, but it still could be, it could be arbitrary.
But how could you pick another number, this is gonna be the, the question.
I don't know, but I mean, I'm sure, again, that discussion has, we're not gonna be the first town in another country that's had that discussion.
Well, but this is a very unique definition, I can tell you, cause most towns don't allow any people, you know, of the, the unrelated.
And, and that should come out pretty quickly.
Yeah, but we, we would want it to be unrelated, and so the question would be, do you want it to be a bigger number, or does that start cutting into?
I wanna be able to defend the number in public.
I can. I can, cause it's somewhere in between.
Fair enough.
Ground cover, not to try and force the issue here, but folks, let's move it.
So the ground cover.
Isn't really controversial.
Yeah, the, the problem with the ground cover is it's listing a whole lot invasive species.
Well, do you want it to specifically, in the key?
Yeah, so I would, I would say I would leave out, like, not necessarily limit, I would, such materials, I would just like, let's not define them, like, cause you're putting in things that I wouldn't recommend that we use anymore.
But I thought we need to have a list, so if you can say it looks kind of like.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I guess I would.
I mean, let's just be consistent with them.
Well, I, I really think there's some things that may, a list makes sense, and some may not.
Yeah.
I think we have to be open to this.
It has objective subject plant materials generally not excessively two feet in height, and used for decorative purposes or for their soil, soil stabilization.
In this particular case, I would agree with Denise that maybe we don't mention invasives.
Well, do, do you, more than that, though, we want to specifically say native species.
It depends on how it's used, I would say non-invasive, you don't have to say native.
How about, how about if we just eliminate the second sentence?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I would, that's what I say, just, I would just, that second sentence is like, oh, we, we don't.
Cause you're gonna have, well, even then, ground cover can be referred to other things besides plant materials.
Okay, we're agreeing.
So there's plant materials.
Everybody agree on the elimination.
So, so actually, then, no, but Michael brings up a good point, and then we need to revisit the beginning of the first sentence, and not limit it to just plant materials.
Well, usually ground cover in the sense that I think would appear in, in the records, would, would be just something that is growing, it's not, not mulch.
Yeah, mulch is different, that's.
What would that be?
What would you consider stone?
Not ground.
Stone, not ground cover.
Ground cover is.
I, I consider mulch a ground cover.
Ground, ground cover is a, a farming terminology, and it would never refer to stone or mulch. It's a kind of a plant that covers the ground, I think.
See, I, I, I read that differently, because like.
How are we using it that we have to, we would only refer to farming things and not anything else?
No, but we also would, you know, you also would refer to lawn possibly.
Was that, that's ground cover, but it's a plant?
Well, that's a plant, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, I guess, like, I see some ground cover like, a perp in a school stump, that's ground cover.
In the area erosion, probably, you think in the, the, probably in the regulatory.
For those of you that have the regs open on your, do you wanna just figure out where we're actually using ground cover now?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
How much of that will it, can't search?
For soil, for soil.
Yeah, it's to put the roots down in it. So a twenty-pound boulder might be ground cover, but not mulch.
Your house is ground cover.
Yeah, my house is. Nothing you can wash away easily.
Maybe we don't even need to define it.
I have a reason that ground cover is a term of art in landscaping, in landscaping, ground cover is a term of art in the landscaping process.
Yeah, like, yeah, like, there's numerous types of materials for ground cover.
Okay, also, though, in our regs, well, I guess that's ground cover over three, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, that's like.
I apologize.
It's a term of art for many plants. Low, low plants, plant state, not the worst.
Yeah, they, and then, and sometimes they call them ground cover plants, you could add that, but ground cover is, refers to plants. If you Google ground cover, it will.
Well, I guess the, the question is, are we using the term at all in our current reg?
Yes, so I'm looking at a thirteen point two point eight, required appearing vegetation, or, or Jane was saying.
Not those ones.
Okay.
There shall be no clear-cut openings in a well-distributed stand of trees or other vegetation, including existing ground cover. Shall be maintained, existing vegetation less than three feet, so it's a different number than in our definition. In height and other ground cover shall not be removed except to provide for footpath or other permitted uses. That's one place it shows up.
And there clearly is referring to vegetation.
Yeah, definitely, but to your point, it said less than three feet.
Yeah, so, the definition from the University of Georgia is ground covers are spreading low-browing plants used in landscapes to cover an area of ground.
Perfect, so then we also use it again, so.
It's in the, in the gateway.
In the gateway.
So I think just keeping it, I don't, I, I just think keeping it pretty general, but I would get rid of the examples, cause I'm.
Yeah, okay.
But what about those two feet, three feet, that's, describe it, say that. Should we say that in excess of three feet, in excess of the reg says?
It says generally not in excess of two feet.
Well, I, I think, but again, why would we say three feet in one place and two feet in another?
Yeah, it's like, it's called low-browing plants, so.
Well, let's, should we make it three feet in both places?
I would keep them the same, I think, I agree, I.
Okay, three feet.
Okay, three feet it is.
Three feet, no second sentence.
Okay, then, there we go, parking area.
Yeah, I, I guess, if, the only thing I can think of is the elimination of motor vehicles, not vehicles, but motor.
An area of covered, an area covered with a surface to be used with storage, passage, or convenience of motor vehicles, or pedestrians, including without limited to streets, parking lots, drive. streets, parking lots, driveways, loading areas, sidewalks, or impervious surface drainage swale.
My definition's there.
Is that parking area?
That's paved area, I'm sorry, parking, I'm sorry, parking, I'm sorry, let's try again, I'm sorry, I'm getting sitting late.
Any public.
Any public or private land area designated for, and used for parking motor vehicles, including parking lots, garages, private driveways, and legally designated areas of public streets. Do you just think we should take out the word motor?
I personally do, because there's other vehicles that are non-motor, and they're referred to as vehicles. A trailer is a vehicle.
But would that be a part of.
A vehicle still wouldn't park.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the thing.
Because you, you might find yourself paving and, and doing other things to the area where your other vehicles would not be located. That would not be what we'd want for those things, but would want them for cars. So we might end up making the parking area, because, because what you want to park doesn't really mean the same kind of preparation as a motor vehicle spot.
But we're not talking about paved areas, we're just talking about definition of parked, parking area.
Yeah, but parking area is.
Designated areas of public streets.
It'll be.
Well, maybe you require parking areas, so do you ask to require parking areas for?
No, I get that, that's what I'm trying to make sure.
Okay.
I think, I think you'd be regulating something you didn't mean to regulate by adding that.
So let's, let's keep that as it is, move to shade tree.
Oh, this is probably another one that I was like.
They're like thirty-five feet.
Evergreen tree, it's a shade tree.
Deciduous tree with an expected mature height of thirty-five feet or thirty.
Yeah, I guess it was the same thing.
And why does it have to be deciduous?
You'll.
So ask, so ask Mr. Gomes, why is he putting footages in for both evergreen tree and shade tree?
Well, I think the idea of shade tree is that you want something that's gonna be going high and out, because that's what's gonna give you your shade.
Yeah, I have a tree, an evergreen tree in my yard that does that.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, so why do we have to say deciduous?
Fair, fair enough, do you want me to remove deciduous, is that?
Yeah, I think it should just be a tree.
Yeah, I mean, shade trees are pretty much defined as deciduous, depends on how it's being used in the regs.
Is, are we ever talking about wanting shade from the tree in our regs, as far as you know, Eric?
Yes, I mean, certainly, the, the goal of shade trees is you're trying to thermally keep something cool, that's why you have them. And particularly in wetlands context, other contexts, you want your streams or whatever else to have the shade tree.
Yeah, but all, but all trees do that.
Do we use that, though? Do we use that in our regs? Do we actually?
Do we, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
And they're actually in the reg, I'm just, I just did a search, seven twenty-one thirteen, it actually says deciduous shade tree.
Yeah. So that's, that's what.
That's for access, circulation, streets, and parking.
Because it's like a candy tree or a.
Yeah, yeah, so, and maybe we should leave it at that, deciduous shade tree. It's almost like you don't have to define shade tree. You know what I'm saying?
And this doesn't really define shade tree, because it's just talking about a tree that has leaves that's gonna be thirty-five feet, but it doesn't actually say whether it's gonna shade a thing.
In the reg, it's, in the reg, it's.
Should we just delete the definition, is that what the whole point is this time?
Yeah, I think it's getting, like, I don't think we have to go there.
That's too nitpicky.
Okay.
It is, it's getting too crazy.
Out, shade tree out.
I mean, when, when they define it as a deciduous shade tree, I think we could figure it out.
Okay.
So, so the, but the reason for having defining, not defining shade tree, but defining ground cover, if ground cover is a accepted landscaping term. Just, I just, just again, I'm just trying to be consistent, what, what's it, what's it?
Well, because I think, well, because I think in the regs, it's, because deciduous, I mean, deciduous, we don't have, we don't have to make up the decid, um, a, uh, definition of deciduous, deciduous is a science term, so we don't have to do that. You know what I'm saying?
I thought we just brought the definition of what ground cover is, though, for landscape, so we have shade, we're gonna take a bit of shade tree, but we're keeping evergreen tree and we're gonna keep ground cover.
Yeah, but ground cover, you could look up and have multiple definitions, when deciduous basically.
But one point about shade tree, it doesn't say anything in the definition that this tree has to provide shade.
Right.
It's only in the first word.
And that's what sold me, that's because, like, is that what that regs said, that's what it's.
The regs just say.
Define deciduous tree, can we define evergreen tree?
Wait, I don't know.
It's only used in one place and one place only, and that's in one section of the planned residential conservation area, and it's deciduous shade trees are gonna be planted at sixty-foot intervals in some, so it's, it's, it's almost self-defining within.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, the reg itself defines it, so I don't think we need to, well, other plans, it's not necessarily self-defining.
And it's not, it's not used anywhere else.
So again, for consistency, we're defining, we're not gonna define shade tree, I understand why, we're defining evergreen, but not deciduous.
Yeah, because evergreen is different than.
I see what you're saying, good word.
Okay, I, I know they're different.
Yeah.
So basically she's saying it's true, it's true, I said, might we just put deciduous, I think, not.
I was thinking tree, if Mr. Gomes kind of looked it up for us to see why.
If we, if we need it.
Yeah, and why is.
So then, but then that's then the follow-on, if he says you do need it, then say, do we need to define any other trees?
Yeah.
Just so I remember.
I don't think so, it's only one used there.
I mean, to your point, do we need to do ground cover, I mean, it's one of those things like.
I can see like.
It's pretty standard definitions as well.
An, an application, though, you wanna say you want.
This is where you're not gonna remove ground covers.
I think it should be defined, although, because if you're in an application and you wanna be, you know, like, it's a landscape plan or whatever like that, and let's say we wanna see maple and oak trees specific to the development, that's how we're referencing, right?
A lot of time is on people, what kind of plant do they put in, so.
Yeah.
Which was, which is a good thing.
Right, I'm taking, exactly, so that's what I'm saying, so then, like, let's put all the words we use.
If we use, if we use all the words, then it should say deciduous shade tree to start with, and then just define the.
In context, in, in one sentence, in the whole set of regulations, so pull it out and find it, it's injured on it.
I moved on from shade tree, I'm talking about evergreen versus deciduous, apologies for that.
Okay.
Well, but, well, I, I think evergreen is used, see, evergreen is kind of a more colloquial term, where either you talk about conifers that then don't use that leaf, you know, that, that are either, you know, keep their leaves all year round or are deciduous, or, yeah.
I think the general question to Gomez is then.
Do we need it?
Do we need to define all different kinds of trees, and if not, do we need to even define more kinds of trees?
I'm just scanning for evergreen too, and it's used in landscaping, and it's one evergreen tree not less than six feet in height. So it's.
Because evergreen is.
Used very specifically.
It's usually as a property.
Evergreen tree shall not have six feet, no shrubs, so it's.
Yeah, that's like shrub.
Less than six feet in height, so it's.
So I'm in favor.
Oh, shrub is too bad for that.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to scrub this section.
Can't wait, so I think, but I think they're all, it, it's worth discussing, like, with, maybe, are landscaping terms. I, I agree that we, we, it's good that we talk about landscaping a lot, so then I think we should have some consistency and some rigor in the landscaping terms that we define and how they're used in the regulations to reinforce our positions when we're having these conversations with applicants.
Sure, in, in the case, in these cases, we're talking about, as I'm looking in the regulations, they're used in context and specifically, so. Which was against me to define them.
Yeah, because if it says that you have to use a shrub as of six feet, why do we have to then say?
It would be six feet when you put it in, or is it gonna be a.
More to the point.
Expected mature height greater than twenty feet, so, I think that's part of the reason why some of these here is to get the height and to get the size out of the, these, instead of the little plant that this is.
So then, Jane, then that brings up a, a topic writ large for phase two, is we wanna look more carefully about how we discuss landscaping issues.
And we do, actually, that, usually on every plan, it'll say the size of the tree.
I, but I, but I mean, I'm putting it in the regs.
Yeah.
So the big question would be, do we change these now, because there's no definition, so these are new definitions, right? They're all in purple, so do we leave them all in, which would be evergreen, shade, shrub, ground cover? Do we leave them in, or do we just do them in phase two? Figure out how, how they should be in, because it's, it is kind of weird that they're.
We're gonna check that the definitions are consistent with usage and, and reg.
Yeah.
What do we think?
I'm, I'm okay with Mr. Gomes checking out them all and giving us a little bit of a dissertation as to.
Yeah, hopefully we need to go there.
What, what would be the best thing to do?
Well, and I think especially in the context of, that's a topic that is important.
Yeah.
When we're talking about the.
I hate, I hate to ask this, but I'm gonna ask it, will we, the plants, plant trees, or some side plants? The passo, by the way, um, the plants would say something like a seven-foot tree.
Yeah.
Is gonna go in there. We didn't talk about the mature height. We recognize that whatever tree, tree it was, coniferous, red, whatever, that it was gonna go in at seven feet, and it may grow up to twelve, fifteen feet, we never, I never looked at what the mature height was gonna be. Would we be opening up that can of worms if we have such a specific definition?
I guess, as I've been hearing the discussion tonight, you've been trying to take out height limitations more generally, so I think that probably is safer, um, but then, again, it's gonna come down to a thorough examination of whatever the landscaping plan is, um, and I think that that sort of factors into your whole special permit review process that you go through, um, that you just need to be aware that your landscaping plan is gonna have a sheet with all the various species on it, and we're gonna need to basically go through those species and say, yes, no, different species, whatever. Um, and that may be something I send down to consulting, because I gotta tell you, I'm not an arborist, I'm, I'm not gonna be the person who's gonna say.
No. You're landscape engineers, it's a great deal.
There are landscapers, yes, so it may be something that at some point I need to go out and get assistance in reviewing a landscaping plan, um, so that's just something you guys need to keep in mind for future applications, however this shakes.
The soil and water conservation districts can help you with that.
Absolutely, I mean, I, it's not like it can't be done, there are plenty of people out there who can certainly consult with me about landscaping. But just keep in mind that the more you want to talk about landscaping, the more it's gonna involve having expert assistance in reviewing the landscape.
So, Eric, I hear what you're saying, I think, my, my point is, it's not the more that we're gonna wanna talk about landscaping, we're already talking about it, so let's make sure we have the reference tools in place to support those conversations that are already happening, I don't think this is gonna cause us to all of a sudden be doing it more frequently than we already are.
I understand.
It's not causal.
No, I, 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 I agree, and I just, I wanna make sure that the terms we're using are terms that are gonna be useful when we go talk to the landscape experts.
Yes.
So that, that's, I think, that's really, the, the, the point being is using terms that will dovetail with the people in the industry, and, and so that we're gonna get with the result we wanna get.
Yes.
And then there's just a consistency part, because if you're, if it's in the reg in detail and in context, then you don't necessarily need to define it.
Okay, Paul, you were gonna jump in here?
That's what the purpose is, is why he's got, what it is in there.
I mean, and one of the things we might be able to do, and we could just do, take a look at this, it might be that, um, the Connecticut egg experiment station, if they have definitions, we could maybe just say, like, you know, refer to Connecticut egg experiment stations definitions of what all that stuff is, and we don't have to go there.
Okay, again, Paul, you were gonna say something?
I was gonna say that if you look at all of the things that we've been talking about, the evergreen, the ground cover, the shade tree, the shrub coming up, we should probably bounce off of Francisco. When, when we're looking at an application that comes in, we ask for a landscaping plan. What are, what are the elements of that landscaping plan? Is it deciduous, is it evergreen, is it, you know, is it a shrub? I mean, is that what, and maybe that's what we should be including in here? Rather than trying to decide what, for what types and heights and things of that nature that we should be including. Maybe we should get some input on this.
Well, and again, if you look at your existing regs, thirteen A three seventeen talks about, um, landscaping should be provided and permanently maintained and conform to the standards. Um, in addition to the standards for landscaping here for specified, landscaping shall be provided and permanently maintained in the intent to reduce excessive heat, glare, and dust, and provide privacy from noise and visual intrusion, to control erosion of soil and excessive runoff of stormwater, to enable recharge of groundwater, and avoid degradation of groundwater, wetlands, and watercourses. So you already have that piece in your regs now, so.
Do we really need to start breaking out an evergreen, a shrub, ground cover?
That's what I, that's where, I think that was one of the reasons I told them all out.
Just a question, so, however we decide.
So I think we should just ask Mr. Gomes, what he thinks.
Well, let's, let's.
That's, that's what I was.
Let's get further input and see where we wanna go with it, okay?
Right.
Um, shoreline flood and erosion control structures.
I don't, I mean, I, I think this needs to go to phase two, because I think flood and erosion, we need to have significant discussions about.
Is that a proper definition?
I would second that, just because I have some.
It's the black definition.
But is it something we can live with now, because it's in black?
No.
And we put in the phase two. What, what, but this is, I'm insisting that.
Yeah, I know.
So we're saying, take it out?
No, no, I, I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying, like, my, my point is that I'm not suggesting we put this forward. So, I'm sorry, I thought, the decision was made, if we're gonna completely rewrite a definition, then that's a phase two ex, exercise, so I'm suggesting that this needs to be completely rewritten. So I don't think we should sit here and consider it a technical phase activity.
Which, which one is that, um?
Shoreline flood and erosion control.
But that means that this, this thing one will stay until phase two.
Would you, I think, Mary, Grace's, Mary Darling rather is saying is fine, she's okay with it.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
We, it has to, because I, there.
That's my point, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it has to, because it's, there's no point in making small changes if it, the whole thing has to be done.
And it's obviously, it's a vital, it's vital to have something there, because we need that for all of our flood and erosion control, all of CAM applications.
Exactly. But is there. Yeah, but is there a way to, like, identify, so when it does go in front of the public, we have identified this as something that we would like to address in further detail in phase two? So the public's not like, why are you just leaving that, is this? You understand what I'm saying?
I mean, we can certainly.
That's, that's true about the whole reg.
The whole reg?
Everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so maybe that's, maybe, but maybe that's part of our communications plan, Jane, right? Because we're saying, like, as we're putting this forward, these are the issues that, you know, we're open to other areas, but these are the other issues that the commission has already identified are going to require further review.
Or we could say, this is a definition that we are specifically asking the Charlotte, the flood and erosion commission to take a look at.
Yeah, something like that.
And the state ban for things.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, something like that, so that, that, I guess, then is probably one of the communications piece.
Okay.
And these also, these, these regulations are whatever we're coming up with to, uh, use as examples, they also have to be run through our attorney lawyers, they also have to be run through our engineers, they have to be run through professional firms that deal with this all the time.
Well, and in particular, this one, because of the recent change in the statute, is gonna have to go to DEEP, because flood and erosion control structures right now, just sort of recently been given sort of this upgrade, that every one of them is gonna need to come to you for a CAM application.
Yeah.
So, whatever we come up with on this, DEEP's gonna need to sign, sign off on.
Yeah, so there's no point in sitting around tonight trying to come up with something.
And also, you know, we kind of think of shoreline as being coastal, but it includes navigable waters.
Yeah, we have a lot of water.
So it's not, it's, it's inland waters as well.
So actually, that's a good point, shoreline.
Shoreline doesn't, shoreline, you know, which.
Is not sufficient.
Shoreline doesn't, doesn't refer to coastal.
But shoreline, the, the, the term shoreline and erosion control structures, I think, is what the state uses for its coastal area management. So I'm not sure we're gonna be able to change that, the, the name of it.
Well, it says, it says from tidal coastal or navigable waters.
Yes, absolutely, but I'm saying, but if, if the issue is we don't like the term shoreline flood and erosion control structure, I don't think we can change the term, I think the term is given to us.
Regardless, the whole thing is gonna get rid of it, so we don't have to do. Regardless, the whole thing is gonna get rid of it, so we don't have to figure it out tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that brings us to shrub, folks, or are we just gonna skip over shrub as part of the whole?
Skip it over, skip it over.
Yeah, and I'm gonna see if there is a, if, if we have landscape definition terms at the state so that we don't have to.
Okay.
I like that.
That would be great.
We can just refer to.
So that brings us to transient. And there was an issue, we use transient in two different ways, Michael was telling us, right? You were the one who said we use transient in different ways. You don't remember this?
Um, I might have said, cuz transient's also a reference to like a boat that comes or goes.
Well, no, but you, why don't you look in our regs as to how we use the term transient? Cuz I recall you saying we use transient in two very different ways.
Like an unhoused person?
Well, that's one way, but that's, cuz that's the definition we have here is a person who is not a permanent resident of town, but is visiting for personal or business reasons.
That's not an unhoused person.
No, but that's also not the only way we use transient.
Right.
So give me, Michael's that here, so I know we use transient in an entirely different way.
Let me go back to the current practice.
Damn, what can do?
So one of them is for parking and storage.
Yes.
Recreational vehicle, is it, so that's the whole like recreational vehicle in the subject lot, be it transient or permanent. That's the whole thing of not allowing someone to live in a recreational vehicle. But that's referring to transient, not as a person, transient as a person.
And this one, and this really says it's.
That's talking about a person.
Yeah, exactly, that, that was where we got held up on this, that basically transient was an adjective and transient was a noun.
Yeah, cuz it's also in, that breakfast.
Yeah, so why don't we, why don't we have them look at that and clear that up?
So this definition is just a carry from that?
It, it's an existing definition, but we again, we, we use it in different ways. So again, a noun versus adjective, and we need to sort of look at both of those terms and see whether, whether we needed to find them differently.
But now we're doing that or?
Hmm?
No, Mr. Gomes.
Okay.
No, I will ask Francisco Gomes to take a look at, that we're using that term in different ways and is there, do we need to break out the definition to explain that we're using it in different ways?
Yeah, transient is naturally being a temporary.
So that, that's adjective versus noun.
Yeah, so that gets back to.
So.
That gets back to, what do you name the definition? So maybe transient person or a.
Well, or change, change the word where we're using it as fleeting into.
Yeah.
Impermanent or something, contemporary.
Well, we're getting the meaning to literally just say transient noun, transient adjective. If we're gonna use that same term different, two different ways, sort of define it in each grammatically.
But I think you're, I think you're right, the, I, the way, the easy way to do it is you find it as an adjective and then put, if you, when you wanna talk about a person, you would say a transient person.
Transient person, okay.
That's, I meant, that's the simple.
Yep, I think you're probably right. So that brings us to water dependent use.
So you got it?
And that one, those ones might be defined by DEP, that word, water dependence use. Cuz that came up in, uh, the coastal area management thing, context.
Probably, yeah, it's probably in the Coastal Area Management Act.
Yeah.
I was thinking that. Something like that, here, marine use protections, water dependent. It's nothing to do with the marine related stuff down here, here. So marine research facility is not a water dependent use, so it's. Okay, now move to the definition.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move to section twenty-six. Accessory motor vehicle services, you already looked at this tonight, I think.
Yeah, wasn't that the thing that was only in the LI zone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so let's skip over that, boarding of horses.
Two ten.
Something to do with another, if I'm not mistaken.
I have it as one ninety.
Yeah, I have it at like two thousand or ten ten.
Okay. Um, and there's no numbers listed in there, but I think.
Keeping of horses owned and used by the occupants of dwelling. Such use shall not include the renting of stalls or boarding of horses or horses for compensation. It's funny that the definition is called boarding of horses.
No, I read that too, it's like.
There might be a little bit of a circular aspect to this stuff.
Yeah, really. So I'm not improving the wording. Boarding of horses cannot be the not.
So you can board your own, own horses, but not somebody else's.
Boarding of horses, so it must be of horses, so this type of.
Seriously?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but where are like, where are high hopes, that's a.
So that they would be concerned, considered a commercial.
Commercial livery, boarding stables, why you weren't adding?
Stables.
That's different.
No, our other uses.
So this is basically from private use.
This is for private, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And unlike most towns, you can have a horse on a tenth of an acre here, we don't care.
Yeah.
So boarding, it's or boarding of horses, not or boarding or horses. So it's just a typo in there too.
Boarding of horses.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is interesting because it's in. I'm gonna keep, by occupants of the dwelling, because it's, when you look at the use table, it's in districts that do not have residential uses.
Okay. But the main, predestined, whatever, okay, I understand, the main, but we, is that a substantive change? Is that a substantive change we wanna make now, but yeah.
I think it's worth a look at.
Yeah, but so if I have a house with, that is in the residential zone, it's got my own horses in it, it's not.
That's fine, but we saying is in the, for instance, the waterfront district, where you can't have residential use, you can still have a horse. So you put the horse on a boat.
The funny thing is about every single waterfront lot has a residential use on it.
I mean, you know.
Okay.
Every single one.
Okay.
So why are we looking at this?
Not, the commercials, the commercials always have residential uses in that.
It, right, it's in, it's in, it's in LI eighty and WF twenty that don't have residential as a lot of use.
That's what he's saying.
I, I used to.
So where are the occupants, where do the occupants occupy?
But what I'm saying, are there some.
For residential horse.
Are there some commercial zones that have residential?
All the ones, but he says for LI eight, and WF twenty do not have a residential component in them. But you can still.
Not permitted residential component, or they all have residential in them.
Yeah.
And the definition refers to occupants, which I'm gonna go on a limb and say that.
So, but again, that would mean that if you have a nonconforming use, you can still have a horse there.
Yeah, that's exactly what that means.
By right, by right.
By right, yeah.
By right.
So I, I, I'm, let, let's skip over for now, I, I don't think it's worth spending a lot of time on tonight.
But maybe that's a phase two future.
Some inconsistency.
Okay, um, boat livery.
Yeah, the only change I just heard, question I have or concern is the very last sentence. This definition excludes marine operations that provide long-term docking, maintenance or fueling services. Are, are they, by saying long-term docking, that's all I'm concerned about, like, is that, is the long-term definition necessary?
And it's a non-transient?
What's that? No, just as in short-term.
No, it's.
Okay.
Well, what would you have it?
Should you say provide docking, say, say, taking out long?
Yeah, just take, just not defining long versus short, because you get people who come in for a couple days at a time. Um, people come in from like what, they're in a boat.
So wait, is this to, this is somebody who just rents watercraft, but doesn't do anything else?
That's what I'm trying to.
Rent it out for short-term use.
A commercial establishment or boats, kayaks, canoes or other watercrafts are rented out to the public for short-term use.
Include facilities for storage, don't you, long-term?
Like.
Because like, this is like the boats on, uh.
Oh, I see, yeah, but that's why it says long-term, because short-term is allowed and then long-term.
That long-term would be have to be done at the marina.
So by, by defining this, so. The long-term would have to be done in the marina.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the.
But then, so by, by saying that, that means in theory that the short-term is not allowed in the marina.
No.
No.
No, that's, that's not what it's saying, it's just saying long-term isn't allowed here. So Black Hall can't do long-term storage of boats.
Even though they do.
Well, that's, okay.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, like, first they rent.
And to a certain extent, why not?
I, I agree.
Okay, so they'll remove long-term, is that?
Yeah.
But wait a minute, so you, then you get marinas everywhere without regulation at all.
What do you mean?
No, that's not what we're saying.
Uh-uh.
Cuz they can be long-term as well.
Well, how, you're not gonna have a marina anywhere else but the WF twenty?
But this is boat livery.
You know, I, I understand, I understand.
So where is boat livery allowed?
Isn't the, the problem with this, the, the commercial establishments where watercraft are rented?
It excludes marina operations that provide, it's the exclusive.
So I'm looking at like, if someone, like a, a company, since Prince of Supply calls an example, if you do it, they rent space in industrial or order kayaks that they sell.
Okay, but the, then that's.
But that is their boat livery.
Facilities for storage, don't you, long-term? No, because that's a separate, used on a separate location.
Well, so the boat livery is exclusive to the WF twenty, right?
Let's.
Yeah, boat livery is in WF twenty, C ten, C thirty, C three oh five.
It's just not in the LI.
It's.
It's not in the LI.
And that, I think I parked it cuz I wanted to see it in the LI.
Well, that's in the phase two issue there.
I mean, is it those?
Well, there's a retail component.
So to, to, to Michael's point, do we have to get into, should just say this definition excludes marina operations, period? Cuz it's like marinas have a, their whole other definition, so we're just saying that somebody can rent a kayak, they don't have to be a marina, they could just be renting kayaks or whatever boats.
So we just wanna delete the rest of the sentence?
Marina has a, has, you know, marinas can do other things we don't have to talk about. Why, we don't have to say that they provide long-term docking or maintenance or fueling.
Just marine operations, did it have its own definition?
It has some.
That, that's why I was asking, that there is a marine definition.
So this, that, so we can just say this excludes marine.
Okay, so let's just put a period after marine operations and delete the rest of the sentence.
Well, I think you're right, wanna follow that one.
There's not a definition.
How can you, you mean that operation?
That's, that's, that was the other reason I think I parked it, cuz it's, this definition excludes marine operations. To me, that would imply that there is a definition, or my, this is.
So maybe we just need to say marine facility.
Well, we.
Cuz the definition of marine facility seems like that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so marine facility is that word now gonna call it?
So I.
No, not changing the name.
I think this is Mr. Gomes' way of saying that boat livery locations cannot fuel the boats and they can't maintain the boats and they can't provide long-term docking. That's what I think he's saying, that that's some, is a no-no in the boat livery definition.
Well, then the other way to, so then the other way to do it would be to just say that, but not talk about marina facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
So just delete the last sentence entirely, didn't it?
No, 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 definition excludes long-term docking, maintenance or fueling services.
Docking, maintenance or fueling. So don't even mention marina operations.
Okay, so.
So how does, how does that, for instance, impact Black Hall out there?
Well, Black Hall is gonna claim non-conforming to a whole lot of stuff.
But some future Black Hall that wants to come into town.
Yeah.
That little area that a hot cross from.
The virtual graves yard.
Oh, I wasn't even thinking that, yeah, 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 but I went about down by, um, um, ten, no. On one fifty-six, almost a, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, the old limber, yeah.
No.
Any pilgrims land in?
That's it.
Any room?
That's what I was thinking, but I.
Would the word exclusively?
That guy down there does rent kayaks for people to go up and down the water a little bit.
Yeah, so there's all, like, we were just, this problem just came up the other day, cuz we're talking about this. There's five different companies that came into town and were liverying boats, not from town, but they were basically setting up kayaks for people to come in and pay and, and use the public access, from there.
From there, from there.
Five separate companies.
Through him?
No, no, not at all, just, just random companies that came in, started selling packages to unsuspecting people for kayak and paddle workhorses. Um, it was like a really big deal.
Yeah.
So.
It would be a big deal.
So I, so I'm looking, you know, the way, when I just keep looking at it, I'm thinking that you would just say the definition excludes long-term docking and fueling or, and or fueling services. I would not say maintenance, I don't have a, services like that.
Could you fix this by putting the word exclusively before rented?
Commercial establishment or boats, kayaks, canoes or other watercraft are rented out.
Are exclusively rented out to the.
For short-term use. Cuz I rent boats and kayaks and canoes on a short-term basis. So I just.
So, but not as a boat livery, right?
I don't know, that's what I'm, I don't know if I'm considered a boat livery if I do do that.
No, I think the goal here, Michael, is that marina is supposed to be a broader term.
And that's why you're saying, if you said that they exclusively never renting. They don't do the other marine, you know, so.
They don't provide dockage for, for, um.
So then you would add exclusively in front of rented and get rid of the last sentence?
I'm just trying to, I'm just saying.
I'm asking, I'm just trying to, sorry, I don't think you're saying.
Yeah.
The other example I was thinking of is like, they're, right, currently right now, I guess it's not a red, but there is a
questions with.
facility in our LI eighty that maintenance is vessels, so if we.
Well, this isn't, this isn't about marinas, this is just about.
No, no, I know, no, yes, I understand, so, but, okay.
And it has the exception, it says in front of the.
I still like, I still like just crossing out the word marina and just saying the definition excludes operations that provide long-term docking, maintenance or fueling services. So that's, that's, that's the, so you're not trying to go look for the other definition, you're just looking for what you can't do.
Yeah, and then I, the question I have about maintenance is it does say that, that allows repair services, so.
Okay.
So I was, I was thinking just take, say, long-term docking and fueling.
So you're still able to do the repair services.
No, this is in the sentence before it.
Cuz like you cash, it's weird when you say, you can do repair services, maybe you can.
So, so cross out marina and cross out maintenance in the last sentence, I think we have.
Okay.
So, but, and so then what we're saying is we're comfortable with that idea that, for instance, Black Hall is gonna claim their non-conforming rights, but a future business won't be able to do what they do.
No, I think, we think that Black Hall is doing what this rec, this rec says it's doing.
Yeah, I think they do it.
But they're doing the long-term storage.
The long-term storage, they got boats.
And long-term docking.
Okay.
They do year round.
Cuz it does say docking.
Yeah, they don't, they don't exclusively rent.
No, but it says a boat livery may include facilities for the storage.
Docking.
For the storage, so that's, storage is long-term. I mean, when you're storing something, you're, it doesn't say you're storing it for overnight. It, it's short-term rental use, but they, it says that they can do storage, so that's, so they're okay. Long-term docking is somebody coming in with a boat and, and now docking for a lot, long-term. That's not storage, that's someone coming in and saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dock for two weeks.
Yeah, but you, but you do store on land.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but it allows the storage, we're just saying they can't come in and do long-term docking. Docking is not storage.
Well, if it's gonna be that big of an issue for Black Hall, I'm sure they will.
They'll let it start.
I don't see why they would be, cuz that, that, they don't do long-term dock, they don't have boats, I mean, it's like.
Does he do docking?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have, they have slips.
Yeah.
Oh, they have slips, okay.
Yeah.
And then you have people who park out there, and you have people who store kayaks.
And, but, but, but you don't list them as a marina as well?
Yeah.
I, I don't know why we listed them, they've been there.
I bet you had any money there, they operate as a marina.
Well, see, that's the thing, I hope, most of the marinas were already existing prior to the rec.
They're pre-existing all kinds of.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, so it doesn't really matter, but.
For them, I'm thinking their future.
I, 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 only thing I think I wanted to see was in the L I C and actually only.
See, I think, yeah, I guess I, I have no problems with each, you know, I think we should take out the marina and their maintenance, but I think the other thing works and it's a matter of if they're coming in, as long as we want a lot of businesses to come in, they would just come in as a Marina, that's a lot of a long term docking, which I always think. Wait, so if somebody could do a small business as a boat livery and then they come in, they're doing a bigger business, they come in as a Marina. You're doing dock docking.
So the idea is.
Do they do fuelings? Do they do fueling?
Uh, they all that. Fuel pumps are another regulated.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Do you like them?
That one is not, Marina does.
Okay, so Black Hall does.
Black Hall does not, but the Formula Marina does.
We're coming up to eight forty, folks, so we're we need to if we're gonna wrap up tonight, we're gonna need to move.
Do you want to just put a pin in it for that?
No, I think we have. I think we have a sense that we're going, my understanding is that we wanted to read this definition excludes and delete the word Marina, operations that provide long term docking, delete the word maintenance or fueling services.
Right.
And go with that.
Okay.
Okay? So that brings brings us to building materials.
And this is in, I'm sorry, I'm just so lost now that the purple is just a movement or is a replacement?
Purple is movement.
Yeah.
Or redefining or something we already had, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes it's.
So what's the current definition of a? In your old regs, what's the definition?
We don't have a specific definition for that, so I'm trying to see what we we do define.
Oh, there it is. It's on Marina LIAD.
Yeah, have to be in that LIAD.
Yeah, because they're.
Because it's a principal use, a retail establishment. You're fine with it?
Well, let's keep going, okay?
Business professional.
My kind of question, so retail use in a LIAD?
If it's all that particular kind of use, then theoretically, yeah. Because we don't want that use anywhere else, but if people need to buy, then that's the only which we're gonna let them buy it.
Business professional. Is this kind of, do you want to expand for um?
So I I guess um the. Or we we're on business or professional, I mean, both business and professional office and business service establishment. I mean, I understand the uh concept of both. I just um wonder if we want to consider um whether or not the this is forward looking enough when we look at the trends of, you know, what new um businesses are are coming out. So, I mean, especially if, I mean, dropping on a business service establishment, we're talking about a telephone answering service and secretarial service, nothing wrong with those two things, but I would offer that in twenty twenty-five, that's not really going to be relevant. And so if the point is to have things that are relevant that Eric can compare to, whether it's like, you know, something similar, then we should find some more current examples. And then are there things that are coming out and about? And again, just, I mean, you know, thinking of some of the technology um enterprises that are coming out, are there any that we wouldn't want?
Yes.
To be coming in, and I'm not even talking about, you know, data storage facilities, but.
Well, I mean, the the one that comes to mind is basically, you know, the 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 whole customer service, you know, phone operation there where you've got, you know, thirty people there answering phones twenty-four hours a day, um not in India, but where usually is these days, but do we want that sort of operation in online?
Like a front of you flowers.
But those are, I mean, those are even on the way out, though, those are being replaced with AI. And I mean, that that's a whole issue right now is that those call centers in the Philippines and such are about to potentially go out of business because they're not gonna be needed any longer.
I understand.
So so this is where, you know, so yes, I I think it might require some time looking at it up, but and I'm just putting this out for the group, do we think it's worthwhile to, if we're going to be updating this, remove things like telephone answering service and secretarial services?
Yeah, I do.
With something that is actually more relevant to not even twenty twenty-five, but twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five?
Yeah, I agree that we should.
But is that gonna be sort of a phase two then discussion then? Because that will take more research than we probably can do between now and December eighth or January, whatever it is, or do we want to try and include that in phase one?
I I would love to start with asking Francisco how other towns have addressed it.
Okay.
To start.
And I I.
I want to do something specific on the list too, which is the data center.
As an exclusion.
Just consider if if, yeah, whether that's in or out.
Oh, it should be out.
Well, right, but that that's, I mean, that's the future.
But it could be it could be construed as a professional service.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can ask Mr. Gomes to uh make sure that we have no place for data centers. Which is not a home occupation. Definition for a home occupation says this definition is saying it's not a home occupation, so.
Oh, by having it as a business.
You think I could have the data center as a home occupation?
This is referring to the business professional offices.
All right, I think I agree that Mr. Gomes could work on this and see if he could give us some more contemporary.
Let me see what you can do.
And so and is isn't this her personal, is that in the use table? It's in the use table, right?
It's in the use table, both those are on the use table.
And business service establishment is in the use table?
Yes.
So I think commercial vehicle parking, did we deal with that already?
I think we did, but does anybody have anything more to say about it?
It may be if we're gonna add something like data centers in, because then we have to decide what we want to do and we have to think about excluding them or not excluding, and that very little is a key. Because if we, so I think researching it, but it comes up with a list of, okay, these are contemporary services, then we have to decide if we want these in our count or not.
Right, exactly.
So that and that that really gets into a bit, that's.
That could be a phase two.
That's that's. But you don't want to define it.
But it at least gives us an understanding whether that's the rest of what we're going down.
But I would want not want to have some of it in a definition without us deciding what we want to do.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Um, commercial nursery.
Commercial propagation of flowers, plants, nursery stock or berries, new definition, or berries.
You go for the vegetables.
We don't like that spots in all time.
Well, that has to take place on a farm, I'm sure.
What's that?
Vegetables can't go on a nursery, you have to go to a farm.
Wait, there's.
Very, very important. Don't think that they can sidle their way into a greenhouse.
Well, we're down to like ten minutes, folks, I.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think, I mean, it's fine for now, we can, let's say it's been talking about. I'll I'll look for a better definition.
Okay, this one's just dairy and bottling works, which I know was a big issue last time we talked about it.
I don't know, I have that page, dairy and bottling works.
Not a home occupation. None of those.
Special comments in the LIAD. Reproductive growth.
Got these minutes.
I just got the email for minutes, that's why I said that.
That can we do next month's minute?
For a second, for a second.
Give me just a couple more minutes, I'll want it.
For a second, I thought you just said our minutes for today, I'm like, she's ready to end the meeting.
I think probably I asked the question.
You did?
Yes. Um, the it's the word commercial.
Okay.
Um, because most of these kind of things happen on a farm. And that there is kind of a problem statewide where, you know, farms are doing what farms do and um in order to stay in business, they decide what sometimes to do their own um bottling and creation of the products.
Okay.
And when you say they can't because it's now a commercial use, they are not allowed to do it.
Yeah, it's.
Where they are.
It's interfering with water dependent use.
Do you want to just delete the word commercial?
Well, as long as dairy and bottling works are allowed in in what zones are they allowed in?
It's only LI.
LI? Yeah, well, that's.
So is there a distinction between dairy and bottling works on the commercial side or dairy and bottling that they use in their farm stands?
Because it says processing, which would, a lot of farms do processing. Packaging and bottling, they do that. Milk cream, yogurt, other dairy based products for distribution and sale. Pasteurization, homogenization.
Is that more of a commercial basis?
Well, but this is what farms actually do.
Yeah, it's a commercial, farms have a commercial aspect to them.
They do, they do, but but yes, they are commercial by nature, but they're not considered to be something that you can only have in the LI eighty zone.
Yeah, right.
They're they're all over the place in residential zones and all that.
Right, except by like organic milk from a farm. That's bottled on site.
It might.
Baldwinburg farm.
So the is this a new definition or an old one?
It's a new definition, but we previously had this use in the LI eighties, that that part hasn't changed.
Really, but he defining it now sort of.
He's defining it.
So therefore it's gonna.
So maybe there's someone, Jane, are putting in something that talks about, you know, on farm, you know, ex you know, exempting on farm or something like that.
So the definition of farm is any tract of land for which the principal uses dairying or raising agricultural products. Such et cetera, excluding but excluding commercial cattle, cattle, commercial catering, commercial propagation of flowers, plants, mystery tropical berries. When combined with onsite sales in general, public, commercial greenhouses, commercial livery, and boardy stables, commercial bedroom house, or cattle feedlots and rent reaps. So it does not exclude.
No, do we want to let it, the way to handle this then, say exempting as accessory to an established farming operation?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a little bad.
I would say established. Well, I guess would you say established if it's still is not current, like if there's a new farm that comes out?
Well, yeah, but we we I said established in the sense that you have to establish a farm use, okay, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So how were you gonna say?
Is farm a permitted use or?
At the end, you're like.
Yeah, something like that, yeah, or if that's the way to handle it.
Farm is.
So you'd say all those things, um, but not accessory to an existing farming operation?
Yeah, establishing, I would be more establish farming use.
Hey, Michael, I thought you left your drink.
Okay.
But so at the end, you're going, but not.
Well, but we're exempting um as accessory to an existing farming use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that that takes care of the fact that you it's you're not covering that in in what you're you're limiting this to.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So the notion that this is something where the product, raw product gets delivered to.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
That you have a that you have a commercial plant versus doing.
Yeah, this is basically a primary use, the primary use is bottling of milk as opposed to accessory to the farming operation. Okay? Family childcare home.
Is there not a standard definition for this?
Um, there probably is.
Is that your uh?
And I think that's.
Statutes.
Oh, it's got six, it's got the number six in there again.
I mean, they're regulated by the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood.
Yeah, I think this is a state definition, but I'll double check with Francisco.
Well, this is, oh, because I thought usually when we have state definitions, we have it's reference the state definition.
Well, let me check. Given the numbers it's using, I'm pretty sure these are the numbers that the state uses.
That's what the it is what the state uses, so I'm just, you know, again, for consistency elsewhere, we.
Reference statutes.
Reference the statute. Yeah, but it's nineteen eighth dash thirty seven.
Okay, so let's let's just include the statute statutory reference, okay? Um, farm stand, last one.
So do we have a definition of a? Oh, God, you know, like the one that's up here on on the post road, where it's not just a farm stand, it's a, you know, they've got other stuff going on there.
Yeah, we we have, if you looked in sort of the agricultural, if you look at what like the dangerous Lord does, we have a set, that's covered, but you get to have a farm stand only for things grown on site.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, but I was trying to look at the farm stand versus, I think we have a, I guess that's the point. I'm guess I'm comfortable with this as long as we have a definition of.
I think I think that.
Of, oh, I guess a farm market or something like that.
Yeah, I think that that the temporary was important because we've had several of these being located along the road, especially during the summer. And so they, but I don't know how you um regulate temporary there.
And do you want to regulate temporary though, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know, because I think the one, there was one that was set up, it's not there anymore at Hefflon Farms for for a short bit. Um, but the one just down the road next to Dan and Bill is just permanently there, but they've closed up shop because there wasn't anything there that was grown anywhere around here.
With seasonal.
Yeah, I'm just.
So I. No, because you might have a farm who has a greenhouse who's growing year round.
It's a temporary.
What's that? Even though the, no, the farm isn't temporary, but the farm stand.
Well, this is a roadside stand.
That's what I'm talking about, though, so you could be growing, that wouldn't be considered temporary.
Well, I love the, I like the word seasonal rather than temporary, because then it's like, you know, hey, if you've got someone who's doing eggs, you know, because sometimes, you know, you have somebody.
They're four hours, they still.
And I have to say, it's seasonal, there's not as much egg, there's not much egg production in the winter time as there is in the summer when they have excess eggs, so.
Could they do Christmas trees then?
Yeah, that's that's what I'm saying, it's like, you know, I think seasonal, I think seasonal is a good word.
I agree with seasonal, anybody else?
No, that seems to.
Okay.
I agree.
Seasonal, okay.
Yes, yes. Yeah, but is that are we regulating what seasons?
No, just seasonal, whatever they're.
Seasonal.
Whatever.
It's not gonna be their own.
Okay, so it's okay to be if they have four seasons, it's okay to be out there on four seasons.
Seasons, yeah, as long as it's on farm and it's, you know.
Because the idea, don't we just get the, I mean, we we don't mind them.
No.
No, I don't.
Right, so that's one, so we we want to find a way that like.
That's what I was trying to get, I'm sure temporary is a lot of the name.
Yeah, yeah, and it's sort of the same thing like, you know, that temporary thing where, you know, or it's more or seasonal where they're just at the side of the road versus a farmer's market like the one that's on the post road.
So this is to distinguish something that needs parking and needs proper, you know, on top and all that from the 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 thing that'll just be pop up.
Right.
If you if you're gonna save it year round, you need to be like the high granger guy, you gotta do a regular sight sight and show everything.
Yeah.
See, well, I guess they kind of cover it, though, if probably it's grown on premises. So do you need any of the temporary or the seasonal if it's specific to the that's grown on premise?
Well, it's still, it's whether when somebody wants to have one and they want to put it next to the road, is it gonna now be a problem because we haven't ever reviewed it? It's not, doesn't have any place for anybody to pull off or terrible sight lines or whatever.
Okay.
I think that was the reason why it was temporary.
It gives us the ability to have it taken down if it's causing problems.
Yeah, and it'd only be just like Sundays.
And so are they meant temporary?
The day of Sunday where everybody gams up.
So are you arguing that we should leave it as temporary for that?
No, I like seasonal just as much.
Okay, I I think that the consensus is seasonal is the better word there. So let's wrap this up, it's now nine o'clock. So any other business that we can do, because there's nothing else on the agenda, so.
No, may I close the question?
Okay, second name?
Second.
All right, got it. Meeting is starting at that clock.
We are so good.
Okay, Paul, I'm gonna hang up on you here.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Feel better.
Okay. Two more meetings for this year.
What's that?
Now, two more meetings for twenty twenty-five. Well, when I get down to like single digits, yeah.
Are they setting a a workshop for next month?
I am under the impression that we've.
We're good.
That we're good, and I was gonna basically talk to Gomes, come back to you in the next couple of days with whatever he says. Um, but my. Um, but my, again, up to you, folks. My hope was to get whatever revisions there are in, by, in application for Jan, for December. If you still think you wanna come back and discuss further the things you've said, ask Gomes about.
No, not further. I, I guess, I just was trying to understand how are we getting the, the communication of, of everything that's been done, that's all.
Well, okay, here's what I, what the whole thing.
I don't wanna discuss anything new further. It's more just like a wrap-up.
No, absolutely. What, what I will be doing is, once I send this out to Francisco Gomes, I will get back any additional text or changes that he suggests based on our conversations tonight. I will send that revised version out to everybody and probably at that point ask, do you think this is ready for an application? And if you guys can get back to me with, yes, you think it's ready for an application, or no, I'd like to discuss this further, we will then go forward, either set another special meeting or start, start with an application in December.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm to, I think that would be great. Even if we have a few more things we wanna talk about, to start getting public input. So I think going to an application, starting to have public hearing on that. Or if we want to send it to the other commissions first, getting feedback, however, whatever the process.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm talking, I'm not talking about a rapid session to revisit any, I'm talking about a planning session, just talk about what specifically the next steps are going to be and getting that written down and so we can publish it and inform people. But if we can do that all by email.
Well, I mean, a lot of the next steps are at this point gonna be statutory. Okay, cause we have statutory referrals that have to go out. I can send it out to any number of other boards and commissions as well. But statutorily, it's gonna go to about eight different places at this point. Um, so, you know.
That's right, you know, Eric, when you send it out then, send us the, the schedule.
Okay.
All the next steps.
I will happily do it.
So we all see it and we're all like, okay, that all makes perfect sense. And then we can also talk about what we wanna do in terms of communicating that out.
And again, if there are more boards and commissions that you want this version of the reg sent to for input, by all means, get back to me and I will make sure they get it copied as well.
So if you send us a list of what all the next steps are including who, who's gonna get it and when and what have you, then we can decide whether we need to meet in person to talk about the next steps or whether we can just like email.
Okay.
Or, or we can, if it's short enough, we can do it in a regular meeting.
I'm laughing, cause all of our regular meetings are so packed.
No, they're not, not.
Most of them.
Sorry, there's nothing, well, there's not, I know, there's nothing on them.